Good evening. Good evening. I would like to now bring our meeting, our reception part to a close. The food is still in the back. Please enjoy that as we start our meeting. I would like to welcome you to our regular school board meeting. Today is Tuesday, May the 2nd, 2023. We are starting at 6:00 PM. Our call to order and the land acknowledgement. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Would you please stand as I lead you in the pledge? Thank you. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Colonel Oliverato.
Here.
Colonel Suri.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Burnett.
Here.
Mrs. Matheson.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Hardy.
Here.
Ms. Marotti.
Here.
Mr. Doran.
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson.
Here.
Thank you, the board has a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. First on our agenda is that we are here and we will recognize our 2022-2023 school district retirees. Before I even start reading, I just want to say that this is a night that we all look forward to. It's bittersweet because we say goodbye to dedicated staff and that who have served our community, who live here and work here, and who have served our students. So this is a night that we celebrate you, we acknowledge you, and we tell you thank you for all of the dedicated work that you have given to this district, to its students, and to our community. Staff members who have retired or have provided their notice of intent to retire this school year as of April 25, 2023 are included below. When notified about the recognition, retirees are welcome to share a favorite story or memory. Board members will share the names and services of all this year's district retirees who were submitted and memories provided by them. A few facts and figures before we begin announcing our retirees. Currently, 68 staff members have either already retired or plan to retire at the end of the school year. But it should be noted longevity abounds in our district. It is something for all of us to be proud of. To date, and based solely on the employment time with our school district and not their total time in education, our longest-serving staff member is Cheryl Normon R., an occupational therapist working district-wide who will be retiring after 38 years with this district. Additionally, this year, and again, we are taking, we're talking strictly about employment with the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. We have nine employees retiring with 30 years or more. 21 staff members with 25 years or through 29 years. And we have 12 employees with 20 to 24 years of employment with this district. In all total this year, we are bidding farewell to 1,445 years of district experience, which does not include all the years our retirees may have dedicated in the education or other districts. As a small token of our appreciation, our retirees are offered the district's Marble Apple Retirement Gift. The retirement gift will be delivered to the staff members prior to the end of the second school term, of the school term. Included in each award is an expression of our appreciation for the dedication and service of our staff members have provided through the years. I'd like to read the verse to you now. "For generations past, present, and future, the apple is an expression of respect, gratitude, and love for those special people who have helped guide us, shape us, and made a difference in our lives." I say congratulations to all of our special people who are retiring. Thank you. I will start the list first. I will start the list first with Amelia Accord. A head custodian with North Pole High School will be retiring after 21 years of district service when she retires in May. As I am reading this, if you are in the audience and you would like to come up and shake hands of the board after we're, I'm done reading all this portion, please feel free, you can come right up. Thank you. This way. Catherine Bates, a music teacher district-wide, will be retiring with 26 years of district service when she retires this May. Andrew Benetti, a teacher at Golden Heart Academy, will be retiring with 25 years of district service. Matthew Veer, a teacher at North Pole High School, will be retiring at the end of this school year with 27 years of district service. Matthew says, "Science and math have been the main teaching subject during my 25 years with the district. However, I also taught video production and theater classes, directed a few stage productions, and was with the technical director of many of the musicians at North Pole High School. As much as I loved my science class, my fondest memories come from working with students in the arts. About six years ago, I directed Rock of Ages. I had a great cast and crew to work with, and during their performances, everything was running so smoothly. I was found, I was just watching and enjoying the show like all the other audience members. Those were great times. One of my dreams was to build at least one truly impressive set before retiring. This year, North Pole High School puts on, put on Anything Goes, and I finally got to do it. We built a cruise ship site to see on its own, and when the performers moved around it during the dance number, it was truly beautiful. I hope the arts receive enough support in the future that students and faculty members can continue to have memorable and meaningful experiences such as these. Science and math are undeniably valuable subjects, but art are what brings student schools to life." Thank you, Matthew, for your service. Mr. Veer, thanks. Next, I have Heidi Benson, a teacher at Tannenaw Middle School, retired this past October after 25 years with the district. Connie Bower Browder, a Ben Ileson Jr., senior high school teacher, will be retiring at the end of this year with 26 years 26 years of service. Congratulations, Connie. Next on my list is Aksum Brown. Is retiring from her position as a Denali Elementary School custodian after 13 years with the district. Shawna Budge closes out her 17-year teaching career when she retires from Denali Elementary School in May. Shawna says a memorable experience she's had when she was teaching at Articley Elementary School. They were making zinnable design, tenable designs to place into a second grade group project, and one student brought up his finished piece. He was very, he was a very bright boy, and how did, how do I say this? He did not have an abundance of artistic talent. He paused and looked over all of the other students' beautiful work, and I watched him, hoping he didn't feel unsuccessful. Then he looked at his own work, smiled, and said, "Not bad at all," and placed it with all the others. I've always remembered that great attitude and think that kid is probably having a fantastic life somewhere. Congratulations. Tyrone Burkhead, a custodian at Watershed Charter, retired in September with 11 years of district service. Rafina Cheek, a custodian at Randy Smith Elementary School. Middle school, should be middle school, is retiring at the end of the school year with 22 years of district service. Rafina says her fondest memories of the past 21 years has been working with so many friendly teachers and support staff.
Love all the stories that people are sharing with us tonight. And just a reminder, as your name is called, if you're here, just come on up and walk the line. So next we get to recognize Mary Clancy, who is who is closing out her 33-year district career as she retires in May from her speech-language pathology position at Ann Ween Elementary School. Ann Ween Elementary School. She had worked as a speech-language pathologist at Joy Elementary for 32 years before making her way to Ann Ween for her final year. And I have to stop just to shake her hand. A funny memory involved an item being delivered to one of the teachers at Joy. Mary said, "One day, she was walking to the office and noticed activity at the front door. An individual had driven their car right up to the front doors, got out of their car, walked into the office, and asked for the package to be delivered to a particular teacher. The individual then said, 'Thank you very much,' and proceeded to return to their car. As the person started to back up, they realized that it might be a little more challenging to back down the sidewalk, as there was a rather large art piece in the center with other obstacles along the way. A staff member or two went out to assist the driver, and eventually, the driver made it safely back to the bus lane and then to Margaret Street. Needless to say, there were several smiles throughout the day." Linda Cassini McGurgen, a 26-year district teacher, will close out her career as she retires from teaching at Tannenaw Middle School. Michelle Dammel, a 24-district employee, will close out her career as she retires as curriculum coordinator with Teaching and Learning in June. Norman Davis, University Park Elementary teacher, has spent the past 28 years dedicated to teaching the children of our community as he retires in May. And many of us may have seen him helping with the elementary running meets and such. So, congratulations to Norm. Jody Dementif, Wella Elementary School teacher, is finishing her district career after 24 years. Cheryl Dow, okay, line up. Cheryl will be retiring in May from her position as ELP teacher after 28 years with the district and its students. Cheryl says, "One of my favorite memories during my teaching career was opening Randy Smith Middle School. Starting a new school from the ground up as a second-year teacher was very memorable. I had the opportunity to create a school mission statement, develop school rules and procedures, select a mascot, choose school colors, among many other tasks. What I really enjoyed most while working at Randy Smith Middle School during those early years was working with a team of three other teachers and sharing the same group of students. As a team of teachers, we were able to plan integrated units and closely monitor students' academic and social development. The relationships that formed between the teacher and students were priceless." Timothy Dow. Tim is a Pearl Creek Elementary School K-3 resource teacher, has spent the past 29 years dedicated to teaching the children of our community as he retires in May. Timothy says, "I've had so many amazing memories. To just select one is difficult. However, some of my best memories were fundraising and chaperoning fifth and sixth-grade students, some with very special needs, on week-long class trips to Homer, Kenai, and Seward. We would stay at the Seward Sea Life Center and Kenai Space Center and participate in many life-changing activities. It was the first time many students had left Fairbanks, much less been away from their home for an extended period of time. I will never forget our many adventures, and still have young adults who come up to me to reminisce, reminisce about these good times. As a teacher, you are in a powerful position to inspire and positively influence students for the rest of their life. I will miss these daily opportunities." Crisostamo Domingo. He retired in February with, from his position as custodian at Lathrop High School after six years with the district. Laura Fantasi. Retired in June from her position as a teacher at Badger Elementary School after 20 years with the district. Myra Franks. Myra is the North Pole Elementary School Extended Resource Teacher and is closing out her district career in May with eight years of service. Myra says, "During the COVID debacle, when students were working remotely, the North Pole Elementary staff participated in multiple parades around town. Staff decorated their vehicles, school mascots, and staff waved and honked at students and parents standing along the road sides, all so jubilant to interact with staff from a distance. The school culture at North Pole Elementary is exceptional."
Next up is Greg Gibson. Yep. Assistant principal at West Valley High School. He will retire from the district in May after 25 years of service. Greg says, "Who can pick just one favorite memory? I don't think I could choose from being at Lathrop and joining the smaller learning communities grant team, creating freshman team, and piloting and growing forensics as a class in the Science Department, or from being an instructional technology teacher working around the district with an amazing cohort. Perhaps it would be working with my All-Star compadres in the nationally-recognized East Summer Academy, or maybe it would be finishing my career with the wonderful staff at West Valley. And the best mentor I could ask for, Sarah Gillum, Taco Tuesdays for everyone. I have had a great 25 years in the district and will miss all the friends I have made." Next up is Eileen Galette. She will be retiring from Pearl Creek Elementary School as a music teacher at the end of May after 16 years with the district. Lynn Galitzer Grover, a 26-year district staff member, will retire from her English teaching position at Ben Ileson Jr., Senior High School. When she retires at the end of the school year, Lynn says, "A favorite memory is simply staring, staring my 26 years at Ben Ileson." I think there's a typo, but we get the point. "It was such an amazing school filled with some of the most talented educators I could ever hope to work with and learn from. The students were top-notch, too, always showing an interest in school spirit and academics, most of them anyway." Next up is Roland Janati, Randy Smith Middle School Kitchen Manager. Roland closed out his district career when he retired in December after serving students and the district for the past 13 years. Carmen Glenn, a special education IRAid with the Bridge Program, one of our 30-plus-year veterans, will be retiring at the end of the school year. Carmen says, "When I look back and see former students that I was teaching life skills to, working at jobs in the community, it puts a smile on my face." Richard Glenn, a safety assistant at Randy Smith Middle School, has 23 years of district service as he retires in May. Richard says, "I'll have past students come up to me around Fairbanks who remember me and tell me how they're doing compared to what they were doing in middle school." Thank you so much. Gary Grassi. Gary will be retiring at the end of the school year with 25 years in our district as service, as he leaves his position as a teacher at Lathrop High School. Timona Grogan, a teacher at Arctic Light Elementary. Timona will retire in May after spending the past 30 years in our district. Michelle Harlemart, a teacher at Randy Smith Middle School, retired in December after 14 years with the district. Michelle says, "One of her favorite memories is working summer math camp with Sam Woodig, Tara Devon, Ben Cabasell, and Tim Dow. Being able to offer students the opportunity was fun. It also provided the opportunity for great professional development through conversation and collaboration." And the last one on my list is Peggy Herred, a teacher at Barnett Magnet School. She spent the last 17 years with the school district and will be retiring in May. Thank you. I have Chris Illingworth, a counselor at North Pole Elementary School, will retire in May after having spent the last 30 years with the school district. Richard Johnson closed out his district career last December after serving 13 years as a custodian at Wood River Elementary. Gregory Cahoe, a teacher at Hutchison High School, will be retiring in May after serving 21 years with the district. Fad Keener, principal of Arctic Light Elementary School, will be retiring from his position after serving 28 years with the district. Fad says, "The lemon tree on the second-floor balcony of Denali Elementary, Phyllis Dixon as our admin secretary at Old Barnett Elementary, and countless students and friendships with staff and memories that stick." Tammy Boyd, I'm going to, oh. Tammy Boyd, "Being the Arctic Light Attendance Secretary for six years with me was a hoot. We knew each other when I worked at Anderson Elementary. She was our day custodian, and her husband Rick was our lead. That was 1995. Being able to share so much of my career with her was something special." Kathy Larson has spent the last 31 years with our school district. I think that one's working. As a counselor, as she retires at the end of the school year, Kathy says, "There are too many memories to choose from. I enjoyed it all. Possibly the most rewarding is having former students seek me out to thank me for teaching them. It has been a great career." Lynn Lesneski closes out her district career of seven years in May as a teacher at Barnett Magnet School. Dina Lund, an IRAid at North Pole Middle School, closed out her 15-year career with the district this past October. Charles Lynn Slay, I think, a day custodian at Randy Smith Middle School, retired in February after five years with the district. My last, Shane McBurney, a seven, after 17 years with the district, will retire in May as a teacher from Arctic Light Elementary School. Next up is Lori Mertes, one of our 30-year retirees, will close out, Lori will close out her school district career at the end of May as an early learning specialist at Ann Ween Elementary School. Lori says, "My favorite memories are working for the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District for 30 years are numerous. However, the one that stands out in my mind happened on my first job with the district as a resource teacher at Howard Luke Alternative. I taught at Howard Luke and Wood River that year, splitting my time between a high school and an elementary school. My whole experience while working for FNSBSD has been in special education. I had a student who I will refer to as RF. RF was a senior who experienced severe learning problems. When I met him, he was due for his three-year reevaluation. He needed his ears and eyes checked. Well, he did not pass his hearing, so I called his mom, and she said he was old enough to take care of it. We took care of it and then looked at his grades and classes. He said he was having difficulty passing his classes and third times a charm for some." Hold on, sorry. "I asked if he had accommodations. He said, 'What is that?'" That year, I became his teacher of record for, that year, I became his teacher of record for history-making accommodations. His wonderful English teacher made needed accommodations so he could pass her class and earn a diploma. Also, with his English teacher's help, he was able to fight, take a firefighting exam orally as his English teacher's husband gave the exam. He wanted to firefight after high school. The accommodations were such that he was able to do what was required, but the amount was cut down and exams were given orally, so it was doable. He was amazing. He was motivated and just needed support. He graduated. Fast forward 14 years, I saw him at Nordale. He worked for a company he dreamed of working for after graduation. One day, I stopped him in the hallway and said, 'You probably do not recognize me, but I know who you are.' He said, 'Oh, I know who you are, Mrs. Mertes. If it was not for you, I would not have graduated high school,' and proceeded to give me a big hug. That is why I have been doing what I do for 30 years.'" Sorry. "I now have children of my students, cousins, nephews, nieces, et cetera. Due to RF's comment, I know I have made a difference from preschool through high school in this district." Sorry, that was hard. Mary Nyukpuck retired in February from her ER aid position at Ryan Middle School after a 25-year district career. Cheryl Noam-Bonar, our longest-serving staff member, will be retiring at the end of May from her occupational therapist position with the district after a 38-year district career. Cheryl says, "In January, one of my first year working, the other OT resigned, and I was the only occupational therapist for the remainder of the year." She says, "Much has changed in my tenure with the FNSBSD since the year I was hired, in which there were only two occupational therapists and two physical therapists. In my tenure with the FNSBSD, I have had the pleasure of working with children from pre-K, early learning, through high school and their families, along with dedicated special education and general education teachers, related service providers, including other occupational therapists, certified occupational therapist assistants, physical therapists, speech and language pathologists, and aides, school psychologists, paraprofessionals, special education clerks, special education coordinators, and building-level administrative offices, and custodial staff and principals. It really does take a village to educate our community's children." Melissa Odesayer retired in October as a coordinator for after schools at Barnett Magnet School after 15 years with the district. Missy says, "I have many favorite memories working for the district. The best ones were with the kids put in my care and the wonderful coworkers at Barnett. Thank you for all your hard work, dedication, energy, and straightforward attitude you have shared with the district." Julie Ortiz is retiring from her teaching career at the end of the school year from University Park Elementary School after spending the last 25 years with the district. James Overeem, an electrician with facilities maintenance, will close out his 25 James Overeem, an electrician with facilities maintenance, will close out his 21-year district career when he retires in June. Kimberly Piazza is retiring from her position at the end of the school year as a kindergarten aide at Ann Ween Elementary School after spending the last five years with the district. Kimberly says, "After we were sent home in the spring of 2020, Ann Ween decided to have a parade at the end of the school year. The teacher's staff lined up along the sides of the road and the families drove past. We were able to see the kids one more time before sending them to first grade." And last on my list is Roger Price, a teacher who works at Ryan Middle School. He will be retiring at the end of May with 21 years of district service.
Sally Race, another of our 30-year-plus retirees, is retiring from her position as a custodial zone manager with facilities maintenance after 33 years of dedicated service to the district. Patrick Romans has spent the last 33 years with the school district and will be retiring at the end of the school term from his teaching position at Lathrop High School. Catherine Romine is closing out her 18-year school district career. Catherine will be leaving her autism behavior technician position with ABEL when she retires in May. Sandra Ryan is closing out her 29-year school district career. Through the years, she was a teacher at Lathrop High School, Ann West Valley High School, and will be leaving her FEA president position when she retires in May. Sandra says, "One of my favorite, my first favorite memories was when I first was when I first came to the district from Austin, Texas," congratulations, "and was teaching algebra at Lathrop High School. It was the end of the year and the students were finishing up their final exams. We had about 10 minutes or so remaining and we were all chatting about my first year in Alaska. One of my students laughed and said, 'Ms. Ryan, we really love you as a teacher, but honestly, we did not understand much of what you said. That Texas accent was thick.' I think of, I think of this to this day, and it was not just my, just the accent, but all of those southern coacalisms that were confusing to anyone north of the Mason-Dixon line. I really noticed them the next summer when I went home to visit my mom and dad. I also recall the years working with students and fellow educators in Building First for inspiration and recognition of science and technology robotics. These 125-pound beasts take a team of high schoolers, a tub of supplied parts, restrictive, non-included-in-the-box parts and modified extras, and very limited time building an industrial-sized robot to play a game that changes annually. The playing field is half the size of a football field and often requires teaming with other teams you have just met. Just getting them built, running, and close to competitive is amazing. The competition includes programming autonomous actions for part of the competition time as submitting computer animation celebration, celebration your, your robots features for a separate event during the competition. But when this little team from Fairbanks won the Innovate Award at the Pacific Regionals against teams sponsored by USCLA and Ford Motor Company, that was amazing." Elizabeth Sanbo, a 26-year teacher, will retire from her position at Ben Ileson Junior Senior High School at the end of May. Elizabeth says, "There are too many wonderful memories over the years to choose just one. They all involve working with our amazing students." Michael Schaefer closed out his 17-year teaching career from West Valley High School in January. Anita Shackles-Miller, a teacher at Arctic Light School, Elementary School, will retire in May after serving 19 years with the district. Joni Simpson has worked for the school district for the past 29 years, currently as CTE director. Joni says, "There are so many that no one particular memory stands out above the others. Fond memories are all associated with times when students reach what they believed were unsurmountable goals. I have also had the honor to work with some of the most incredible professionals that make miracles happen every day, and those people and the memories around them will always be forever in my heart." Lonnie Smith will be closing out his 13-year district career when he retires at the end of June from his account to position. Richard Smith, principal at North Pole Middle School, will be retiring at the end of the school year after 29 years with the district. Richard says, "A favorite memory is working with my team of teachers at Randy Smith Middle School when we would travel with them. We had the great opportunity to show kids who had never left Fairbanks different parts of Alaska and Canada."
Thank you. Next, we have Travis Stagg. West Valley High School teacher is retiring at the end of the school year after 20 years devoted to education. Carly Sween will be closing out her 25-year district career when she retires at the end of the school year from her position as principal at Lathrop High School. Carly says, "It's hard to pick just one memory, but some highlights: trips with our middle school students when teaching at Randy Smith Middle, multiple trips to Seward, and a whirlwind trip to White Horse, Seward, and Haynes; producing plays with my drama classes and when teaching at Tananaw Middle School; creating Innovations Academy at Lathrop High School; and so many wonderful memories with the people in my life, especially students and the staff." Si Tanner, retired from the district in November after six years as shift custodian at Pearl Creek Elementary and Hutchison High School. Warren Tillman retired from his position as HVAC technician with facilities maintenance after 11 years of dedicated service to the district. Patricia Turner, a 25-year as a 25-year veteran teacher, will be retiring at the end of May from her position as an autism mentor teacher with ABEL. Patricia says, "In special education, it is often the smaller accomplishments that mean the most. One of my favorite memories was at Weller East working with a young girl who at the time had limited vocalizations. While we were on the floor at circle time doing calendar activities, a voal ran between my feet and the little girl raised her hand and said, 'Mrs. Pat, there's a mouse.' We were all startled, of course, but all I could think to say was my, to my paraeducators at the time was, 'Somebody write that down. She said a sentence,' and she raised her hand. It will be many moments like this that I will miss the most." Joanne Van Fletteren, principal at Midnight Sun Elementary, is closing out her 10-year district career at the end of the school term. Heather Walker, a 21-year teacher, will be retiring at the end of the school year from Ben Ileson Junior Senior High. Heather says, "A favorite memory is being able to work with my husband in the same building. Also, the wonderful colleagues and mentors that I have been blessed to know." Timothy Walker is currently serving as a teacher at Ben Ileson Junior Senior High School. He will be retiring at the end of May with 15 years of service to the district. Sandra Weaver, a budget specialist with the district, closed out her 36-year district career in January. Richard Wiley, a counselor for North Pole High School, will be ending his 21-year career at the end of May. And Donna Jo Wolf, a teacher at Arctic Light Elementary School. Donna Jo will retire in May after eight years with the district. Donna Jo says, "I have many favorite memories working for this district. However, my favorite memory at this district was chasing moose off the playground while working as a principal intern." As was mentioned at the beginning of our recognition, the apple is an expression of respect, gratitude, and love for those special people who have helped guide us, shape us, and made a difference in our lives. Every year for the retirement recognition, we solicit stories from our retirees, and each and every year, we hear how our staff members, teachers, aides, custodians, secretaries, administrators, nutrition service staff, each and every single employee is an essential part of our district's mission to provide our students an excellent and equitable education in a safe and supportive learning environment. These stories reflect how each of you have made a difference in our lives and the lives of our students. It is the expertise, commitment, and compassion of the thousands of professionals who work collaboratively day in and day out for our students who have made a difference for our present, past, and future students in the Fairbanks-Norstar Borough School District, producing generations of community members who go on to enrich not only our community, but our state, our nation, and our world. On behalf of the entire Board of Education and the Fairbanks-Norstar Borough School District, we would like to send our sincere appreciation and gratitude to all of our retirees. Congratulations to all of you and all the best in whatever or wherever your retirement takes you."
Sure, we'll take a two-minute at ease.
Seven adapters so that you can charge.
Be easier.
Oh, but you need the USB, right? This goes straight to the computer? Hey, you better go if you're going. You better go if you're going. Yeah, yeah, it's very brief. It's like top of the hour, bottom of the hour.
Here she comes. We'd like to call our meeting back to order.
We'd like to call our meeting back to order. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda, and we do this by vote of consensus. Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We move on to public comments and reports and on agenda items. Public comment or report and non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the school board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first. The board, and if time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and the city of residence for the record. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for school board and chief school administrator comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may be needed to be gathered. Public comments, input, ideas, suggestions are welcome on salaries, benefits, and any other contractual item regarding the Education Support Staff Association, ESSA, and the Fairbanks Education Association, FEA, negotiations. First up for testifying is Ms. Duncan. Please come forward, state your name, spell your last name and your place of residence. You have two minutes.
Excuse me. It is, are we not going off this list for Sandy Ryan?
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I'm sorry, Ms. Ryan, I'm on the wrong list here, but we'll, we'll get you up. Ms. Ryan is listed first to testify, and then Ms. Adam will come next.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Ryan. I'm a 36-year teacher of mathematics and computer science, 29 of those right here in Fairbanks, and I currently serve, at least for the next 64 days, as the president of the Fairbanks Education Association. I do reside in Fairbanks. As we come to the end of another school year, we are also approaching the one-year anniversary of an expired negotiated agreement between us and the district. November 9, 2021, we begin procedures for negotiation with what we called a pre-bargaining research summit. The idea was that the teams came together and they talked about common ground, hoping that when they came to the table with language, they would find a meeting of the minds. We were very hopeful. That was 539 days ago. The Fairbanks Education Association has never, never been forced to go on strike. In fact, I don't even know if we've ever taken a strike vote. We have always, always been able to work with administration and come to a respectful agreement. We will enter arbitration in early August, and if that fails, we have one last shot at the table. If that also fails, we will take a strike vote. They're taking my time. I would like to acknowledge the Hutchinson High School student body for presenting Resolution Number 7 to the Alaska Association of Student Government. The revolution, the resolution which was overwhelmingly approved by the state body supports the FEA and our right to strike, our right to work for a supportive educational environment, and our right for job security. Thank you, Alaska students, for your support and your respect. Tonight, our district is saying thank you to our current educators and for their years of service. However, without recognizing that the actions by this district, if they do not change, we will see the first-ever teacher strike in Fairbanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan, for your testimony. We have a...
I just want to ask Ms. Sanderson, if you could remind the audience to not clap after after every testimony. We're going to be here all night. Thank you.
Were there any clarifying questions that we need to ask Ms. Ryan? Ms. Ryan, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, and thank you guys for your service.
Mr. Low, Adam?
Good evening.
Good evening. Just state your name and spell your last name, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Adam Low, and my last name is spelled L-O-W. I reside here in Fairbanks. And, that's good. Okay. I work for the University of Alaska Fairbanks, and I run a program called Upward Bound and Teaching Through Technology, or the T3 Alaska Program. And I, first, before I go into my talk, I want to just recognize and thank all of the educators in this room. I had 18 years in the classroom, and I, I'm, I'm always impressed by the amount of service and the dedication that goes forward. That being said, I'm here tonight to share that last year, we received a $1.2 million grant to work with North Pole High School to improve STEM education. That grant is dedicated to helping underserved, first-generation, low-income students meet and exceed expectations so that they can go to college. We have worked through a number of mechanisms of partnerships to expand services so that we can offer this program to all students at that high school. This, what does it look like? It is a makerspace, a place where you can go laser cut, 3D print, do cool projects. It looks like a lot of field trips around Alaska and around the country. The Upward Bound program is connected to a Department of Education program called Trio, which is about a billion-dollar federal, federal budget item that has over 80,000 students across the country, and it is a pleasure to be sitting at the table with Fairbanks as a partner in this program. University of Alaska Fairbanks has had an Upward Bound program that's a rural Upward Bound program for over 60 years, and through that process, we have become a leader. We are excited to be at the table here with North Pole High School, with the staff, especially Principal Spillane and the Director of Student Support Services, Bree Gray. So, thank you.
Are there any questions? Erin, and then Ms. Matheson.
Mr. Low, I apologize. I apologize for mixing you up with a phenomenal music teacher, if that helps at all, from afar, and I'm not the only one that did the exact same thing, so I apologize. I have worked with you. I appreciate you. Upward Bound and Trio and all of the organizations that you mentioned are outstanding organizations that not only provide opportunities and support to our students, but they put them on track to, towards that workforce development that the board passed a resolution supporting. And so I appreciate you coming here tonight. I hope you come more often. I would love to see you here more often. I'm sorry, I don't have a question. I just needed to apologize and show my gratitude. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you. Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. Mr. Low, I am a Trio student. I got my master's because Trio was so supportive, and I just want to thank you and your staff for that. I did want to ask, though, if you could share your contact information with the school board?
Be happy to.
So that we can share your programs with our students.
Absolutely. Right, right now, we are focused on North Pole High School, but it is very much in my intention to spread the Teaching Through Technology program to all the district schools. We are grateful for support from the Department of Defense that has added extra funding to our program and made it more possible for us to do those kind of things. So, I'd love to come back sometime. Thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for...
We have one more question.
Sorry, I actually have a question this time. What can the board do to support the expansion of the makerspaces and the support services that Upward Bound provides to the whole district?
I, I, I think being willing collaborators, the university has around $120 million in research funding that comes in every year. Those researchers are absolutely looking for pathways to work with students. So, by, by, by allowing programs like this to happen in, in this school, I'm very much hopeful that, that other principals, middle schools will start to say, hey, let's come to a training. The T3 Alliance program has been a nationally recognized program, so we have partners in Mississippi, Puerto Rico, all over the place, and they've come to learn, how do you do this? So, I am more than glad to, to chart a pathway forward so that the Fairbanks School District can have more of that in their program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Danette Peterson, P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N, in Fairbanks. I want to talk to you tonight about the reading symposium that I attended this past weekend with 58 other educators and administrators from this district. It was wonderful. I'm grateful that I got to go. We heard that literacy is a civil right, that our students need to be able to read in the information age. Yes, as educators, we understand that illiteracy is the pipeline to prison, homelessness, and poverty. We heard speakers talk about the resources needed to implement the structures and programs to ensure that all of our students are literate. Let me address one resource: money. To many, the Alaska Reads Act feels like an unfunded mandate. The act requires that there be a reading specialist in every building to oversee the individual reading plans. I fear this will result in one less classroom teacher per building and higher PTRs than even predicted. A second needed resource is time. I thank the district for planning time during our upcoming August in-service days to obtain the M-class training. However, additional protected time is needed for the professional development required to complete the mandated reading endorsement. Educators want to implement the science of reading with fidelity and confidence, but please, don't ask us to do one more thing on our own time. Please, don't think that we can do it during the summer or on our weekends. We are already overburdened. I am thrilled that the district wants to make literacy a priority, but it needs to do through, do so through action and not just words. If we are going to do something, let's do it right. Please, help us educators do this right. Please revisit the school calendar and schedule, and work with the administration to find ways to provide, to provide protected time for the mandated training.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your testimony. I apologize if I messed up your name.
No, you did just fine, thank you. My first name is Loa, my last name is actually Carol Hubbard, it's C-A-R-R-O-L-L hyphen Hubbard, H-U-B-B-A-R-D. I reside in Fairbanks, and as a current business owner and also a former teacher, I taught high school math, and I've actually taught K through 12 alternative education, and I was a tribal administrator in California for a tribal education program. So, as, coming here on that, on behalf of that, I just want to thank you guys for supporting parental rights. I think it's very important that the parents are involved as much as they can be, and I just want to just go on record saying thank you. And congratulations to all the retiring teachers and staff. It makes me sad that I'm not in education anymore. I miss it, but thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We have Patty Piles? Weisel, Patty Weisel? Is she on Zoom?
Patty Pile. It's Patty Pile.
I said pile at first, but, you know, still trying to get it right. And so, all right, we move on to Pat Moss. We move on to Barbara Haney. Good evening. Spell your last name and place of residence. You have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Haney, H-A-N-E-Y. I live at 520 North Freeman Road, North Pole, Alaska. And I just wanted to come down here, and thank you guys very much for bringing forth the statutory compliance in the area of parental rights. It's really exciting to see, my youngest son graduated in 2011, and he was number seven. In between the time that he graduated and my first grandchild came along in high school in 2012, something happened, and the policy changed, and there was a very different field to the classroom at that point. I'm hoping by bringing back the statutory compliance and rolling back the calendar a little bit, it helps bring back that unity that parents and teachers so desperately need to be able to help a student succeed. My grandkids probably succeeded anyway because of me, maybe as their grandmother, having them looking over their grades a little bit and letting them know when I thought they needed to stay home and do homework rather than go out and party. But, anyway, I just want to thank you guys for that. And most of all, I want to thank Superintendent Mellon, because I'll tell you what, I remember what she walked into, and I see what she is leaving, and I have so much hope for this district at this point, and I'm just really excited. So, thank you very much, and congratulations to all the teachers who are retiring. As someone who's done that once, I can tell you, six months in, you're going to be like, now what do I do? Now what do I do? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
And just in case I wasn't clear, I, I'm here on my own behalf, not in any other official capacity. Should have said that at the beginning, I'm sorry.
Do you have a question or clarification?
I just wanted to, through the chair, thank you, Assemblywoman Haney, for being here. For those that don't know, she is joining us from the Borough Assembly today, so I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Donald Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. I live in North Pole, and I'm here primarily just to congratulate the board for upholding the parents' rights and continuing to support the state legislation that says that we should be involved in our kids, and to see them grow up and be the better human being even than us. So again, thank you and congratulations to all of the retiring teachers.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony. Next, we have Barbara Trydal. Tyndall? Good evening.
My name is Barbara Tyndall, T-Y-N-D-A-L-L, and I reside in North Pole. And I just want to thank all of you for all of your service, for all the time you put in doing these things, and I was a teacher, but in a private school, for over 20 years, and so I know, I know what teaching takes, okay? So, but I, I'm here also to thank you for supporting and uplifting parental rights, and that gives a lot of comfort to a lot of people, that, that teachers and parents should be working together. You know, we have PTAs for a reason, that we should be a team working on behalf of our kids, so we really appreciate that. And I too say congratulations to all retiring teachers, staff, support staff, and I just thank you again for allowing us to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony. Next, we have Sally Duncan. There you are.
For real, it's time.
Yes, my name is Sally Duncan, D-U-N-C-A-N is the last name, and I live in Two Rivers. Yes, my name is Sally Duncan, D U N C A N is the last name, and I live in Two Rivers. First, I'd like to say congratulations to all those teachers who are retiring and have earned every bit of what they get. They work hard and they promote our kids, and that's important to all of us. Then, I would like to commend and thank you for coming into compliance with state statutes. I think it's an awesome thing that you've done. I think that it allows us as parents, grandparents, and me as a great-grandparent to support this body. And I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony. Next, we have Carly Sweene.
I am Carly Sweene, S W E E N, and I reside in Fairbanks. As Lathrop's principal, I was always, I'm always trying to find ways to take things off of my staff's plates. As you know, we're often adding things to everyone's plates. One simple way that the board could take something off the plates of some of our staff, tonight you're going to hear a report on Policy 1156.1, Major Gifts and Donations. Right now, that policy requires that anytime we get a donation over $1,000, that it goes to the board for approval. And while we are so grateful for everyone who donates to our schools, this is just a piece of busy work for our staff to have to create that letter, submit it to the board, for Ms. Richardson to get that in the minutes. It would really, really nice to see that change and, because it's, it's one of those things that we could definitely take off of the plates of our staff. At Lathrop, we cut a secretary last year, so my secretarial staff has more on their plates because we're one less person, and this would just be a very simple way that I think the board could help. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We have a question for clarification, Mrs. Smith?
No, thank you, just through the chair for point of order. Testimony regarding the items, oh, I'm sorry, that is a report we're...
Yep, it was a report.
Oh, we were voting on that tonight, dang it. I should go straight through.
Mr. Dorn?
Thank you, Mrs. Sweene, for being here tonight on, on this item. One of the things I've heard is that sometimes as principals, you've been offered a donation and you, and some people have felt they could not accept the donation before, went before the board. Have you been in that situation?
I've not. We, I mean, I've never had the board not approve a donation, right? So we accept the donation, we have it, we don't deposit it until the board has made that official vote that they've approved it, but no, I've never had that issue.
And could I do one more? In terms of looking at the $1,000 figure, is, you're thinking we should do away with the figure or have a ballpark of where you'd put it at?
My advice would be to just do away with the figure completely. I think that would make the most sense. And, you know, we're still recognizing all of those people and businesses who donate to us. We're always sending them thank you cards and putting things out on our social media to thank them, and that's, that's, that's the most important piece in my mind.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Burnett, then Ms. Matheson?
Thank you for being here, Ms. Sweene. Just a quick question for clarity. Will this also, if we did something with this, would this also make the availability for kids to more easier do snow cone sales or popcorn sales at school? Does this fall under that or?
No, that would be a separate piece where we need permission for fundraising, and this is just the donations piece.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Matheson?
Hi, Ms. Sweene.
Hey.
So I understand that it's a lot of work to put that in the minute, but then how do we get to know? How do, how will we know who is donating and what that looks like? And, because I look at this list, and if it's a, if it's a company here in town, I've gone in and thanked them for that, and I like doing that. So how, do you have any ideas on how we could still get a list of those who are donating to our schools?
Sure, I mean, my idea would maybe once a quarter, you know, each school sends in a list or something just so you have that, once a quarter or once a semester versus for every board meeting, that might help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sweene, for your testimony. John Rathburn? Oh, Debbie. It's Debbie. Oh, and then John.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Rathburn, R A T H B U N, and I reside in Fairbanks. And I'm here to thank you for entering parental rights into the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District regulations. It's very important. As a mother and a grandmother, it's most important for parents to be informed in all aspects of our children's lives. So I really want to thank you for putting that in.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. And Ms. John?
John Rathburn, R A T H B U N. I reside in Fairbanks. And so often, I'm sure you hear people come with their objections, and so I'm here tonight to say thank you.
Please take your time.
It's important for the schools to work well with the families, the building block of our society, to develop the children who are going to be our next generation that will replace us, and in many cases, be the ones who will be operating the country when we get older. And so I'd like to express my appreciation for the change in administration, administrative regulation to a more parent and family-friendly position on parental rights.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Richard Idee?
Yeah, my name's Richard I D E I D E. I'm from North Pole. And just to, first off, I want to say thank you for supporting parental rights. I think what we're doing is trying to spread more trust around between teachers, the parents, and parents to teachers, and I think it's, it's a good move in that direction. But is it just me, am I just getting older and I have more years to kind of look and see what's going on? It seems like this is one of the most difficult times in the district for, for the following reasons. The staff shortages are, are something else. I have a family member who shares that all the time, that, you know, if a teacher is off for a day, they have to borrow a teacher's prep time here and pay him for them, but I mean, they're shuffling like crazy, and it's a real stressful time, it really is. Support staff, it's hard, it's hard to, you know, find teachers and all these people. There's budget decreases, in fact, there's, there's less money to go around statewide. And yeah, we are spending our kids' inheritance right now. It's going to be different 10 years from now, what's left, but it's, I, I really honor you people from, for working through this the best that you can, and I think, I think you don't give, get enough credit. They don't pay you enough. Poor test results, a lot of times, working without contracts, it's just, it's a difficult time, so thank you. But I think the morale is suffering from teachers and for, in two ways here, and that is, a lot of times, a student gets in trouble, the parent defends a student and goes as high up the organization as possible, even to the superintendent, and then the teachers get flack, and it's a demoralize. I've seen this for years, please watch out. And also, don't let, I'm, thank you for not letting teachers lie to the parents about pronouns and all that. I, I think we need to exercise wisdom, we need to trust teachers, we need to spread trust all around, and I think you've made a move in that direction. Thank you.
Ms. Darn, thank you for your testimony. Dr. Swiffel?
My name is Mark Swiffel, Z W E I, F is in Frank, E L, and I reside in Fairbanks, Alaska. Superintendent Moline, thank you for allowing me to be here, appreciate your work the last several years, some heavy lifting. North Pole, North, North Star School District, thanks for your leadership. I am, I've been to 67 parent-teacher conferences the last several years. I've got five children, four daughters and a son, four biological daughters, three have graduated from Lathrop High School, and my daughter has been teaching, my oldest in Nanana, but just got hired by Mrs. Avirl, who Tim Doran hired to be the new kindergarten teacher at Denali Elementary. My oldest, my second-oldest daughter just did her symposium last night for history, and will be student teaching in history this next year, and I have a daughter who's studying special ed at the university. And then I have an eighth grader, and I have a nine-year-old. And I'm here to speak in favor of Policy 126, the parental involvement in education. And I think there's a mixed understanding, I don't believe it's been talked about or passed here, but I do believe parents need to be actively involved in the education process with their students and with their children. Like I said, I have four adopted, four biological daughters, I have a son who's been adopted, I have fostered, I have sat at Pearl Creek at the request of the principal and teachers because a foster son has had challenges. I've sat there as they worked on an individual learning plan, and I've blown away with how incredible this school district is to fight for kids and fight for children, and I am so thankful for that. I've mentored thousands of students in 20 years of ministry. I've earned a doctorate with hundreds of hours in family systems and human psychology, and I believe in families. It's the basic building block of our culture and our community. And, and, and so I am the, I am a proponent of the public school system, but as a parent, I, I've given permission to doctors when my children were born for immunizations. I had to sign them out of the hospital. They had to check my car to make sure the car seat was appropriate. They, I had to do the 30, I had to sign a parent release and a 30-day health check and a 60-day health check. I, I had to sign off on surgeries recently for my daughter who broke her arm and medications. I've signed hundreds of release and liability forms, I've sat in 67 parent-teacher conferences. I, I've, I've even had to call and been expected to call when my son or daughter was absent from school. I'm actually had to pay late fees for my daughters or my kids when they've lost a library book, because I'm a parent and I'm accountable for my son or daughter. I recently was called by Pearl Creek, is that my time up?
That is your time, sir. And I want to thank you for your testimony, and can you continue to raise those new teachers and educators so that we can hire them in our district?
Yes, yes. Let's, let's be a land where fathers are still found and allow them to have a voice in the kids' lives.
Thank you. And Erin Gibson?
Yes, thank you, Erin Gibson, G I B S O N, and I live here in Fairbanks. Wow, that's loud. Okay. I'm here this evening to speak on one of the policies up for review, actually a couple of them. The first one is 11561, which is major gifts and donations. While I'm all for clearing red tape and reducing the amount of workload, I definitely don't necessarily know if taking the guide rails completely off and just saying, any gift, go ahead and accept it, and then we'll deal with it later. Somebody walks in and writes a $100,000 check, is that something that we want a principal accepting and just depositing and then saying, you know what, in a quarter, we're going to notify the school board that you guys got that? It's a lot of money. You know, $1,000, probably too low, I could, I could agree with that, but that number, just striking that entire text from that policy is probably, at least in my opinion, not the wisest way to move forward. The other policy I want to speak on is Policy 126, so the parental involvement in education. I like that this policy recognizes the importance and role that a parent plays in a child's education. A parent is the child's first and most influential teacher in life. Now, they work with the teachers and the schools to raise their children and educate them, and, and, you know, it's, it's a team effort there in those ways, but I think it's important that we recognize that parents have a central need to be involved. I have four children myself, they all attend Barnett Magnet School, and I have nothing but positive things to say about every single teacher that I've ever encountered at that school, every principal I've ever had to work with, they've all been fantastic. Thank you.
That's your time, sir. Thank you so much for your testimony. I don't have anyone else signed up to testify, but is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and testify? Okay, would you please come up to the podium, state, spell, state your name, spell your last name, and you will have two minutes.
My name is Mariko Kiniken, last name is spelled K I N I K I N, and I live in Fairbanks. I'm here to express my displeasure at the recent reduction of the qualifications for secondary librarians. On May 13th, I will graduate with the degree that our human resources department made me get in order for me to keep my job. But it, it seems like I didn't have to spend five years and tens of thousands of dollars and hundreds of nights away from my family. I could have just waited till they decided to drop pretty much all of the professional requirements to be a librarian. Two years ago, on the literal day that I was scattering my mother's ashes in Hawaii, I received a phone call a couple of weeks before school started, that my librarian job, which I had held for six years already, was in jeopardy because of a paperwork misunderstanding. Two years ago, HR was willing to pull one of their best librarians weeks before the school year started because of semantics, but this year, apparently none of that matters. I was a classroom teacher for more than a decade before transitioning to the library, and I can tell you that the only thing that prepared me for working in a library was my accredited library program. I'm scared for this next year, that with all these new non-librarian librarians, the remaining secondary librarians will be inundated with on-the-job training. Our library coordinator, Kathleen Edwards, her workload is predicated on the premise that librarians can run themselves and librarians can train the librarian assistants. This reduction in librarian requirements either quadruples her workload or greatly diminishes the effectiveness and services that can be provided in a secondary library. In closing, I'm hurt by this. I jumped when you said jump, and I spent my time and my money, I watched as my job changed from books to Chromebooks. I did every other duties as assigned during COVID, and then I turned into a sub when needed. I'm offended and insulted that after all the hoops I've jumped through, that the end result was that I basically did everything you said for nothing. I hope the district will examine the requirements for librarians to uphold professionalism, intellectual freedom, quality collection development, and a careful stewardship of district assets.
We have a clarifying question from Ms. Marotti, and then from Mr. Dorn?
Thank you for your testimony tonight. I just have a request that you send it to us via email, if that's possible, so that I can follow up on that.
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorn?
Thanks for coming tonight and for what you do in the library, I've seen that in action.
Thank you so much.
But just so I understand, the qualification for a secondary librarian is, has changed? If I understand what you said, it's where you have to be a certified librarian, or that, has that changed? What's the qualification?
The way that I understand it is, when I applied to be a librarian, you had to have either a library certification or an MLIS, Masters in Library and Information Science. But as you know, we've had a hard time finding some librarians, so it seems that the requirements have been severely reduced, and all you need is three years of middle school or high school teaching experience, but there's no requirement for any kind of library certification or background, which kills me, because in a few days, I am graduating with the degree that I was forced to get.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the audience? Just state your name, spell your last name in place of residence, and you'll have two minutes.
Yes. It's so loud. Tia Kraus, K R A U S, Fairbanks, Alaska. Okay, so it's a very long email I'm going to read, so I'm going to try to make it quick. So this is my 10th year working in school. I am a social service manager at my Masters in Social Work, and I'm here to talk about the contract that came out today. As a non-represented employee, I have a few qualms with the proposed changes to the contract that got sent out, and they said I have 30 days. And they said I have thirty days of notice. Karen Mellon stated at the last board meeting, one hour and thirty-two minutes in, that non-represented employees are paid significantly less on the low end of compensation. She also said that non-represented positions are difficult to fill. This job is stressful, has a high case load, underpaid, and is emotionally taxing. The school district has now increased the salary to match inflation throughout Alaska when other companies have. And I also want to include that I'm lifelong Alaskan. I'm indigenous from the Ina Alaska. I'm a former foster care child and someone who struggled with behaviors in a public school setting. I mention these things because I stayed in this position most of my professional adult life, because I'm emotionally invested in my profession. I love my job and I love the population I serve. I have worked at a Title One school most of the time. My proposal, I'm requesting the contract hours remain the same. The benefit of having twenty-eight leave days truly adds a healthy work and life balance to my life I need in a high-stress and high-demand job. Remove this benefit, but in contract without giving a chance of non-represented employees to negotiate seems unjust. If the removal of the twenty days motion gets approved, because it got sent out today, I'm hoping the salary reflects the change of schedule, because that's truly a pay cut and it's unfair. I personally say that benefits a large reason I stay in my position. I hope you take my advocacy into consideration while hoping to reverse this. The contract for non-exempt employees, I firmly believe this benefit and part has a correlation with retention rate throughout the company, especially non-exempt. And I understand the equity piece of wanting to change the leave structure. However, the only part that would be echoable about the same amount of leave days during the school year. F.E.N.S. are unionized and have other benefits non-represented employees do not have. If the biggest dilemma about the leave structure is equity, why isn't spring break off an option for us as well, and when we have very limited PTO? Thank you for your time and your committed excellence. Thank you.
If you would submit your email to the board so that we can read it.
I sent it to several people. So I sent it, I haven't received replies back from anyone thus far.
You have a clarif-- go ahead, Ms. Marotti.
Can you tell me what kind of notification you were given that your contract was going to be changed and coming before the board?
I had no formal notification, like in written. I had an informal verbal heads-up maybe a month ago. But I didn't find out about this happening until the board meeting last time, when I was watching it live. And I heard Jane Smith's testimony. And then I called her for clarification, asking what notice has she received?
We have a clarifying from Ms. Marotti.
Thank you for your testimony, Tia. I just checked my email. I do not have an email from you. Could you send it to me?
Yes. I didn't know how to send it to--
If you'll send it to the school board address, it'll come to all of the board members.
Okay.
Every board member was sent it as an attachment to the email that I sent out about the motion that didn't get placed on the agenda tonight, and hopefully should appear on next meeting's agenda. So we all do have it. It was an attachment.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else coming forward to testify, public comment time is closed. Now we move on to our board assembly report. Savannah Fletcher? Okay, I don't see. Is she on Zoom, Ms. Richardson? Okay, thank you. And I don't have a report for you tonight. So we'll move on to our chief school administrator report. Ms. Maline will provide her report. I don't know if we're including an update on transportation this time?
I don't have a specific update on transportation. We are dealing with a few issues in transportation concerning training times with the Teamsters. But we're not really ready for an update on that yet.
All right, thank you, Ms. Maline. Go ahead.
But I, I would like to begin my remarks with, by extending my deepest condolences to the community of Fort Wainwright at the loss of, of their soldiers last week. We have no way of knowing the deep impacts to the lives of those affected. What we do want you to know, that we send our deepest sympathies and prayers, that at some level, you will find comfort in this very difficult time. The second thing I would like to, to talk about is the kindergarten backpack giveaway that began yesterday, May 1st. And it is a way to support families in enrolling their kindergarteners in, in kindergarten for the 23, 24 school year. So anyone that enrolls their kindergartner between May 1st and May 12th will be entered into a drawing to receive a backpack filled with school supplies. For those families who've already registered, don't worry, your name will be entered also into the random drawing for the backpack and supplies. And we'd like to thank our partners at Summit Church of Alaska and the world's largest backpack giveaway for donating the backpack and the supplies. So thank you very much to those partners. Next, I'd like to highlight something that's already been talked about in public testimony, and that's the Alaska Reading, the Alaska Science of Reading Symposium that happened over the weekend. There were a thousand educators from across the state that gathered in person at the Egan Center in Anchorage, and almost eight hundred on the online platform. So eighteen hundred educators across the state were able to participate in this conference. And the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District had sixty in person and several at the virtual platform. This was a wonderful opportunity, as was mentioned, for us to hear national speakers and just a chance to see some of the, the ways that we can adjust reading instruction to be most effective for our students. Next in my report, I want to mention some staffing changes. When I brought my report last time at the last board meeting, we were congratulating Sarah Gillum for being elected as the, or, yeah, elected as the assistant superintendent, which was left vacant when Dr. Minert became the superintendent. So as the dominoes fall, that meant we had an opening at West Valley High School. So I want to congratulate Mr. Mark Winford, who will be the interim principal at West Valley High School, where he actually taught, he actually was the assistant principal there several years ago, before leaving to go to North Pole High School, where he has, as we've heard tonight, built a very positive climate there at North Pole Elementary. Did I say that wrong? I'm sorry. He was at North Pole Elementary for ten years. Anyway, congratulations, Mr. Winford, for being appointed as the interim principal at West Valley High School, which then in turn meant that we had an opening at North Pole Elementary School. So we would like to congratulate Ms. Linda King for being appointed as the interim principal at North Pole Elementary. Ms. King actually started her career in the Teach for America program, where she taught elementary school students, both in rural Alaska and here in the Fairbanks School District, before going to Lathrop as an assistant principal. So we're looking forward to her returning back to her roots in the elementary world. So congratulations, Ms. King. I'd like to conclude my report with honoring our school principals the day after National School Principal Day. Yesterday was National School Principal Day. So I want to just take a moment and recognize those leaders across our district who serve in the role of principal. They are school leaders. And Fay Walton said of leaders, "The only safe ship in a storm is leadership." Eleanor Roosevelt said, "To handle yourself, use your head. To handle others, use your heart." I watch the principals in this district both be that leadership in a storm and lead with their heart and their head. So thank you, principals, for what you, the leadership you've brought to our district and how you've impacted the lives of so many people across the district. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Thank you, Ms. Maline. Couple of quick questions regarding the kindergarten roundup. It's been great going by the elementary schools and stuff and seeing the banners and with the district website encouraging people to enroll. And I believe, and you've announced this at a previous meeting, two sort of regional gatherings to help parents, one at Anwee and one at North Pole Elementary. Is there also an effort to get the word out for parents to go to their local schools, their neighborhood schools? I'm just thinking of, these other efforts are really important, and I love the outreach, but also to encourage those relationships that start when you walk in the door and you actually meet some face and, and also the paperwork. If you have a question about something you wasn't sure online. So I'm just trying to think, what, what communication do we have out there to in both highlight things we're trying to make it easy for parents, but also highlight the local school connection to build those relationships?
Right. Individual schools will be holding their own events, and they are reaching out to the community from each, their school community. So it's not just a district-level push, but also a school level. So the school level is communicating to their school community about the different activities coming into the school, inviting them into school. Many of the schools are having their own kindergarten activities specific to their school community.
Thank you. I wonder, do you want to be wait?
Ms. Marotti, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Maline. Just a quick question. Was the travel for the Alaska Science and Reading Symposium for sixty educators that came from Fairbanks, was the travel grant funded?
We used a number of different funding sources. The Title II-A, which is a part of our federal title money, some of that was used. I know some of our Student Support Services folks traveled on grants provided through their programs. So the majority, I'm, I'm going to say the majority of the travel was grant-funded from a number of different sources.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. On the symposium, I was one of those who was on virtual for bits and pieces of it. And I hope to go back and watch much more of the recordings. But a question not for, to be hazard tonight, but at some point, if you could, through the chair, give us some of the details on what some of the required trainings are. I know some people came back with some questions about that and how it might impact their endorsements. So trying to get the broader understanding, what we as a district or a board, as boards should be aware, we will be required to do, how we can support teachers to the best of their abilities, of our abilities to do that. It's actually referenced. But if you maybe put that in the hopper, I think that'd be very helpful for us.
Sure. And just to clarify, the Alaska Science of Reading Symposium was not specifically an Alaska Reads Act conference. There were a couple of sessions there. So there was, that was a small portion of the larger picture. But yes, we'll have some, we're working on a few graphics for teachers so they can kind of sift through that, the Alaska Reads Act, and understand how they're impacted by the certification changes.
Thank you. And I, I understand there was a difference, but information still was given and, and given with that. So thanks for, look forward to seeing that. And I have one last question to ask.
Go ahead, Ms. Doran.
Just because it's come up several times publicly in the last week or two regarding borough discussions and with the mayor, that in the maintenance, building maintenance fund from a number of years ago, that the district and the borough cooperated on, we settled aside $7 million for some roof repairs, that there may be a balance to that. Have you been part of that conversation and where that might go at some point?
Yeah, I have, I don't know any final outcomes of the conversation, but I will check into it.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Maline, for your report. Next, we move on to, we have no unfinished business, but we do have action items under new business. I'm sorry, is there any comment from the public on any of this? Oh, Mr. Rink said you are still with us. Would you please approach the podium and give us a legislative update? We are waiting, bated breath.
Thank you, Madam President.
You blended in there.
I blended right in. Yeah, just incognito here. Kind of what's going on, the legislature is on about day, I don't know, one hundred and five out of one hundred and twenty-one. So we're down the last couple of weeks, assuming they don't extend at that point. Couple of things that kind of happened about a week and a half or so ago, Department Education in testimony before House Finance Committee presented them with a list of the reserve funds of all the school districts. And it caused kind of a stir, because if you look at it, it said there's a billion dollars sitting there in all these districts. And that kind of got people's attention, you know? Just a billion dollars laying around. Yeah. Anyway, so there was requests out to come, several of the districts to come and provide testimony on that. And Mr. DeGraw was, was one of the invited testifiers to do that. So he was scheduled up before House Finance Friday afternoon. So he and I went down Thursday morning and spent the day running around talking. He had a one-pager to kind of explain. If you look at your reserve funds, it includes your federal money that's sitting there. It includes the, the ones they were talking about, the kids' school money that they've raised for their, for their activities, you know? There's a lot of things. But we, we went around, met all the Fairbanks offices, and then, and then to the Finance Committee members. One of the things that we did, you know, we went through that whole, Mr. DeGraw was the only one of the districts, the five that were invited, that actually showed up in person. The others were all online. And it was interesting for me that Mr. DeGraw, he, he went in, they told him very clearly the day before, you got ten minutes, no more than five slides, right? They wanted to go through all these so they'd get to other bills. He gave us ten minutes, you know, he did his five slides. And they had questions, they spent a half an hour asking him questions. I don't think anybody else got ten minutes worth of questions. But he has clearly established himself with credibility with a number of those people. They knew they could get honest, straight answers, and he was giving them to them, and that's what they were looking for. So it was, it was encouraging for me to see how well he, he did there, roaming around. We also went around and, and met with another, a number of other people, Senate Finance Leadership, Speaker, several others. We also, on Friday, Thursday afternoon, the governor had a press conference that we went and attended, that he's talking about fiscal plan and how they all need to work together. There was twenty-five legislators in the room, and, including all the leadership. And they all did their little spiel about, we're going to all work together to get a fiscal plan. Although there was, nobody said when, and there were hints that not likely going to happen in the next two weeks. There's also a rumor going around that a lot of those efforts may be put into a special session in October for a fiscal plan. Although nobody really has, there's a lot of ideas out there, but that hasn't moved in a year and a half, right? So where the session is now, clearly, the issue is still kind of where we thought we were going to be six months ago. How big's the dividend? And then can we, can we balance the budget, giving an extra $175 million or whatever number that comes out to be to education? So in that process, we haven't, there's a lot of talk, people are moving around, but we haven't got an answer yet. It clearly is still the big, big item on the table. The Senate yesterday put their bill on the floor dividing in the formula, how do you divvy up the earnings of the permanent fund for state government spending, functional spending, and dividends? And the governor, at the beginning of the session, with his budget, was looking at a 50-50 split, which would give $2,700 dividends. The Senate put theirs on the floor yesterday with 75-25, which would give a $1,300 dividend. But in that $1,300 is somewhere in the ballpark of about $1.3 billion more money spendable in the state budget. So every $650, $650 million is about $1,000 in your dividend check ballpark. So it's about $1.3 billion that they then had to cover the deficits. So that was a big step for them to put that on the table, get it over to the House today, so they can, now we can figure out. The Senate, very clearly, in theirs, said that, let me back up. The House, the governor submitted a budget with a several hundred million dollar deficit. The House passed a budget with about a $400 million deficit. The Senate said, "No, we're going to give you a balanced budget. We're going to reduce the dividend." The Senate said, no, we're going to give you a balanced budget, we're going to reduce the dividend, we're going to pay for education at about the $680 per dividend. Not sure how they're going to do that yet, whether it's one-time money or not. But they put it out and said, if we give the lower dividend, we have money for these other programs. And that was clearly the position they staked out yesterday. So now we kind of go down to the last couple of weeks trying to get answers to where they went. But it was kind of unplanned, I think, Mr. DeGraw and I decided at Tuesday evening, we were going down on Thursday morning. So it was a kind of a quick turnaround on that one, but well worth it, and he did a great job down there for all of you, so.
Mr. Ring said, I have a question for you. Do you feel or have any knowledge whether or not Senator Bishop's bill will be moved forward? Or have, it's like the fifth time he's put this legislative piece on the floor.
He asked us at dinner the other night, he says, you know, I sure would like some support for my bill. He's putting it out there, but I don't hear much support for any kind of a tax increase. There's pockets of people on each one, I want sales tax, you want income tax, and he wants his education tax. But I, there's a certain element of Senate, we need a whole plan, not just pieces. And there's certain elements that are kind of wed to their thing, and they really don't like anybody else's. But I don't see anybody getting to critical mass yet.
Are there any questions for Ms. Barnett?
Thank you, Mr. Ringstead, and thank you, Mr. DeGraw, for going down in your advocacy work and talking to our legislatures and things. My question would be, watching a lot of what's going on and a lot of what's happening down there. I talked to Senator Bishop, I've talked to a couple of them, it's craziness, right? I feel like we're back in November, I really do. Is there any temperature whatsoever in the water that leans one way or the other? Are they, the temperature I get is a one-time, and I'm just curious if that's really over.
My gut tells me it's going to be one-time funding, probably at the 600, equivalent to $680 to the BSA, which gives us approximately $16 million, I think, to our district. But that's, I mean, it just kind of, you take the temperature and see what you get. I think that's what it is, there is still, and we kind of pushed them pretty hard on, gee, can you give us half of it in the BSA and half of it in one-time money? You know, didn't, mostly no responses. I think, I think there are people on both sides that want to do it. The Senate was more firm early on. I sense there's a softening of this position in the Senate to make this, as a statutory formula change, and maybe the one-time. But they clearly want to see what's going to happen with their, or their permanent fund dividend bill before they make any long-term commitments. I mean, they have, if you kind of read between the lines, there's a number of them looking at it saying, if we put it in the statute, this money goes on forever, right? And if we're going to keep giving big dividends, we can't afford to have this money in the formula. And so there's a fear in the Senate side, we need to deal with this issue first. That's why they've shoved that bill out and put it on the floor yesterday and got it out of the Senate. And now they got to try and get the House to deal with it and say yes or no. So the split, I mean, the Senate now said 75-25, and the House is still getting their 50-50 split. So we got to go where, you know, we got a 25% difference in there. We need somebody to go make a deal in between, here's you and here's me, let's make a deal. But I hope we can do that in the next two weeks. I'm not holding my breath.
Ms. Barnett has a follow-up?
Yep, just one more follow-up question. I'm losing my track of thought real quick, hang on.
There was a lot of that going on in June last week, too.
Yes, there's a lot of that going on in June. I'll come back, I apologize.
Mr. Dorn?
Call me.
Thank you, I've got two questions. One is hitchhiking on Ms. Barnett's question. As you go through the conversations with people and listen in the hallways, is there an understanding that one-time funding puts us directly back in the same position next year? And we cannot do any long-term fixes to education?
We very often told them that repeatedly, I think they get that now. We're not the only ones saying that. So they're getting that, but they just don't know what to do about it. Because they're still stuck with this billion-dollar decision they got to make on the other side.
And do you have a sense where they feel the governor would be if they put something either one-time or preferably in the BSA where the governor stands on this?
I don't know. I mean, I kind of, it's a sense that nobody, nobody knew. I mean, that's, it just, it seemed like it's a big question mark. Even his closer political allies in the legislature couldn't say what he was going to do, whether, if they put it in, you know, put in $175 million, is he going to cut it to 100? They didn't know. You know, if we, the dividend, where is he going to go? He has clearly moved from 100% funded at a $3,000 or $4,000 or whatever it was dividend to the 50-50 at $2,700. And did indicate in his press conference that we, you know, we're going to probably be coming, have to come to a compromise under that. So he's moved a long ways on that one, but in terms of whether what he's going to do with education funding, I'm not sure he knows what he'll do.
Ms. Barnett, do you have yours?
Yes, I remember now. Yes, thank you, through the chair. The paper, that the numbers and all the budgets and stuff that they're passing around that says we have all this money, are they understanding that at least for the Fairbanks North Suburban School District, we don't have that money?
No, they got a similar message from the five that testified Friday. But after walking through all of it, there was even a few of them that made comments that this really was not a smart move on the department's part to put that out, because it clearly misled them. And they were not appreciative of being misled, particularly in the last three weeks of session on a big-ticket item. So they got the message. I think it was, by the time Mr. DeGraw was done, it was pretty well put to bed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ringstead, for your report.
Ms. Dorn?
Okay, Mr. Dorn?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ringstead, for being here. Quick question on a relatively new bill, House Bill 165, has to do with charter schools and correspondence programs. It's just, if you know anything about it or what your take is, in that it greatly increases funding.
Well, that's the one that go to 1.2% or 1.2 times the BSA bill.
And then it's so intensive, it has a funding implication, it also has some expectations of correspondence schools.
It's, we talked about that a little bit as we were making the rounds with them in that, you know, quite frankly, most of the, most of the homeschool programs are in the black, right? The rest of our programs are not. And so if you're in the black, you don't, do you need more money for those programs? There are some of the homeschool support, legislators are really are big on homeschool, that are kind of pursuing that. I don't see it going anywhere this year. Quite frankly, there's very few bills, we sat down the other night, went through the bills that are moving in Finance and Rules Committee as they try and bring them to the floor, and it's very few bills. I mean, surprisingly, no number, a low number on that. But I don't think, my guess is that's out there more as a thought of, let's get it on the table for next year. Because I didn't hear much about wanting to, you know, broad cross-section of support to put that out at this point.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you keeping us informed. And next is our adoption of the revised 2023, 2024 academic school calendar. The Board has the revised academic calendar. The administration supports and recommends the adoption of the 2023, 2024 calendar.
Move to adopt the revised 2023, 2024 academic school calendar? Second.
Ms. Richardson, did you have information, Ms. Meline?
Would you like to go over the changes and have some?
Yes, please.
Okay, are we ready for that now? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Beam is here, he's going to go over the changes that we're looking at for the academic school calendar and some of the rationale behind that, so Mr. Beam?
Thank you very much. We are going to try to get on the screen, I'm waiting for a code to come up. Doesn't look like it's going to come up. Let me try one more time. Oh, sure. Sorry. So you know what, I'm going to start without it, because now I can see my internet is going in and out. Thank you for your time. If we could refer back to the two pages you have, and specifically, if you could refer to the page that is, that has the arrows on it, that looks like a little, that has the calendar with all the yellow arrows, that's the one that kind of shows more than anything else. There are three significant changes on this, and those changes come, all come from us trying to become, to make sure that we are doing everything we can to do the things that we're supposed to do with the AK Reads Act, all three of these changes. So, I'm sorry, two out of the three. The first one, if we'll note, please, there was a long arrow that moves from November 10th to September 1st. That is us asking that we can move the November 10th PD Day to September 1st. Our rationale there is, we would like that, since we have purchased, since we're going to purchase brand-new K5 language arts textbooks, is that we need to have the training on that as soon as we can in the year. Teachers, in the past, when we've tried to do that during the August end service, that's not, we've gotten a lot of feedback that says that's not when we want to have that. We want to get a couple of weeks using the materials, then we want to have the training. But we don't want to wait too long. So we do have a PD Day set up for September 29th, but we don't want to wait that long. We want to move the one from November to September 1st. That is a Friday, that is the Friday before Labor Day weekend. Our thought there is, it might be nice for families to have that four-day weekend, and then we can still do the work that we need to do. That's one major change. If you'll notice on, there's one in September, there's a little tiny arrow that's pointing from September, oh, thank you for doing that, that's pointing from, that's pointing to September 28th. There's another very small arrow pointing to September 20, I'm sorry, January 22nd, and then another April 29th. What we're looking for there is to be able to have three days for early out, where students are finished earlier in the day, and teachers can have time to look at the data that has been gathered in the few weeks prior to that. So what happens is, we give benchmark tests, and this is a requirement from the AK Reads Act, is that we give benchmark tests three times a year, and those dates correspond with the end of those windows when that testing happens. And then we'll give teachers a little bit of time to work with the data, so they can then figure out the next steps for their students. We would love to get more time for that, but that's what we're looking for right now. So those would be three early outs on those days. And the other change is pretty straightforward, in February, we used to have PD Day on Monday, what would be Monday, the 19th. And then we would have parent-teacher conferences on the 20th and 21st. What we would like to do is have parent-teacher conferences on the 19th and 20th. And then the PD Day on the 21st, just flip-flop those. Our rationale there is the fact that that is a national holiday, and a lot of publishers don't work on those days, and we can't get the trainers up here to train our folks on that day.
You have a question from Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. We heard testimony, and I think we've heard otherwise, that the Reads Act requires a certification that's going to require educators to be certified by a specific time. And it sounds like we're not providing enough time to do that. Can you explain how that's happening and what we're doing to support educators getting that certification while they're getting paid to do it?
Yes, there's a couple of things that folks are mixing up in this conversation. Because of the AK Reads Act, K3 teachers will be, are being told that they have to have a reading endorsement, which the word endorsement, it sounds like it's a big thing where they have to get like a whole new degree, and it's not that. In this case, what DEED is saying is that there are, that there's a class that teachers have to take to learn more about the science of reading. Or they can take a test and prove that they already know those things, and they pass it that way. They have two years to complete that either way, either taking the test or taking the class. Currently, all of those classes have to be put out by DEED. There's one called Letters, there's one called Keys to Literacy. Both of those are being offered now, and they'll be offered for the next two years. But they have two years to complete that.
You have a follow-up?
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate that. So our educators have two years to complete this?
Correct.
Are they able to do this during paid time?
For this specific thing, we cannot find, because this is a fairly intense kind of class, is that it's very much like a class that they would take in college, where they could earn three credits for it. So this, that specific endorsement, that is not something that we would offer, currently that we're not offering during school time.
But are we offering to pay our educators to take that class?
The class itself is free if they go through.
But their time isn't free.
But their time is not free.
So we're not paying our educators the time to take that class?
At this point, we have not had that conversation.
Okay, through the chair, I'd like to have that conversation. I think that that's a very unfair burden financially and time I spend on our educators. I appreciate the clarification.
Ms. Barnett?
Actually, would like to support that, I would definitely like to have that discussion. But now, my question is, for April 29th, you, the days that you're highlighting on the early dismissals, I just, I can't help but notice that April 29th is a Monday, and I'm just curious what the thoughts were behind a half-day on a Monday as maybe compared to a Friday, was the next day something going on with the school district, or?
No, I think it's just because currently the window for that timeframe closes on April 26. We would be very happy moving that to the 26th, if the Board feels that that's a more appropriate place to put it.
Mr. Dorn? I mean, I think Ms. Hardy first, and then Mr. Dorn.
Mine's moving back, piggybacking off Ms. Marotti's. For that test, is that also a test from DEED?
The test is a praxis test that they would have to take, and there are three different options of the praxis test that they could take.
And so then they would have to pay for the praxis like any other?
Right now, that's how it's stated, and that's how DEED put it out, yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Thank you, and I think some of those questions dovetail nicely with, as we look at days, et cetera, with what I asked earlier for those requirements, we can see how we can support teachers and staff with that. My question, because you answered a lot of them in the description of why the moves, and I appreciate those. But for the testing window, and I'm not looking to change that, I know that's set by the state. But my question with that is, we have been spreading that testing out. Is there any plans to kind of tighten it up a little bit? What I'm thinking is, when we, the state first went to computerize testing, the district, in some schools, didn't have the bandwidth for all the students testing to do it in the one week. We didn't have the computers for them to do it, but I think that, my understanding is that has changed. And if that could be tightened up, it less disruption to schools, and certainly, I would say, talk to the principals. But has there been consideration to tighten that up, obviously staying within the window, but not taking two weeks, schedule changes within the, in the school?
Yeah, if you're referring to just the April, just the end-of-the-year test, is that what you're talking about now? Or are you talking?
Yes, the statewide testing, the 18-star.
The statewide testing, that window is set by DEED, you are correct. And while it looks like every school is being, will, will have, will be testing on those days, what they're, what we do actually is, elementary does it this week, middle school does it this week, high school does it this week. So really, it's down to one or two weeks already. In the district, it's the whole month, but in every school, it's like one or two weeks.
I understand, to the best of my knowledge, some elementary. I understand, to the best of my knowledge, some elementary schools are doing some early grades, later grades. So if they're tightened up, that's all I'm interested in. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Are there any additional questions? Okay.
Thank you.
And the next? Yep, yep. Ms., it's under New Business Action Item, which means we have to vote. Ms., what did you say? Ms. Burnett?
Sorry, now that I know we're voting, if we would like to make a change, do we move to amend? Because if so, I would like to move to amend. Okay, well, I would like to move to amend that we change April 29th to April 26th as a half-day. Considering a Monday, that, it's a full school week, there's no holiday, there's nothing following that. I don't feel there's any reason to be released early on a Monday. And if we could do that on Friday, that's also testing. And I think getting out early on a testing day would be fantastic for not only students, but teachers.
Second?
Is there any discussion on it? Ms. Matheson and Mr. Dorn?
Well, I love half-days. Through the chair. If we do it on the 26th, Mr. Beam, would that interfere with any testing from any schools by changing it to the 26th?
Generally, by the time we get to that late in the window, they are makeup test only. So I think we'd be fine on those days.
Seeing no additional questions, Ms. Richardson, would you call for the vote? On the amendment. If we, if you're for moving it, vote yes. If not, vote down if you'll call the vote, Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And now we, back to the main motion of... Are there any comments from the public on this action item? Thank you. So now we're back on the main motion as amended.
Mrs. Smith, sorry.
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the the board, the adoption of the 2024-2025 Academic School Calendar. The board has the Academic School Calendar along with the summary of public input and calendar guidelines. The administration supports and recommends the adoption of the 2024-2025 calendar.
Move to adopt the 2024-2025 Academic School Year Calendar. Second?
Hello there, Ms. Herbie. Welcome you. Go ahead.
Yes, so Ms. Herbie's going to give a presentation of the 2024-2025 calendar and some of the survey results.
Awesome.
All right. Can you guys hear me okay? So I thought I would start first with the calendar and school start times feedback, so that was part of your agenda packet. So that included the detailed survey results, as well as I kind of, I did a summary where I summarized, and also went through with filters and kind of did a little deep dive into some of the results to see if there was anything notable. So this survey went out to all staff, all families, and was released like on our social media, website, et cetera. We got over 3,000 responses, which is pretty good response rate, and is, should be pretty representative of our parents and staff, because there were, there are high numbers of response rate in those groups. We had 78% of respondents were parents, and 29% were district employees. And you could, they could select more than one, and so you could say, I'm a parent and I'm a staff member. About half were elementary, about half of the pair, of people who responded, about half.
Ms. Smith, would you speak a little closer to your mic?
Yep. Of the people who responded who had students, 50%, about half were in elementary and about half were secondary. There was a spread with the employees, 43% in elementary, and then about 40% in secondary, and then spread throughout our kind of smaller areas. Getting into, let me back up, I backtrack a little bit. So this is different from how we have done things previously. So we're trying something new this year. This was, previously, we've, we've gotten, the last few calendar surveys have been, here's two options, choose between them, and they're very similar options, there's like maybe a couple of changes. And so we were getting like 49% A and 51% B, because there were, there were no significant differences between the calendars. So the approach of this, this particular feedback survey was, what are your preferences? What are your priorities? And we actually based it off, I believe it was the Gnome School District, we saw their calendar survey, and liked how they had sort of broader, larger-reaching questions. So that was the inspiration for this, I just wanted to put that in there. So as we get to the preferred start and end dates, so generally, the third week of August, starting in the third week of August and ending in the third week of May, was preferred. And I used our current year as an example, because that's, it wasn't technically the third full week, that we're off by like one day, but essentially, we started the third week and ended the third week. There was no real difference between like parents and staff when answering that. One thing we, so basically looking at, are there larger changes we might want to make to the calendar? Do we want to start after Labor Day in September and end before Memorial Day in May? We had about a 40% respondents of yes. And of course, this is very broad, right? We don't have any details, so it's kind of just seeing like where are things falling, where is their interest rates? Staff liked it a little bit better with 43%, but pretty split, like yes or no. But a pretty big section is like, well, maybe I like it, maybe not, depending on what it looked like. Winter break was pretty clear, they liked that split between December and January. There was no real difference when I filtered for parents or staff or other things. The four-day student week and five-day teacher week is something that has been talked about for, for different reasons. Sometimes it's a budgetary question, sometimes it's a, this is better for staff or students question. So wanted to put out there like, what is the family and staff feelings on that? A little bit more positive, like 40% with a yes. Again, there's going to be a high number of unsure, because there's not a whole lot of information attached with this, just trying to see where people are at. There was more of a split when I filtered for parent guardians, so, versus the overall, the total. That's more of an even, you're like, yes, no. Elementary parents were less favorable of that, obviously probably childcare is a concern. Secondary parents, for childcare, is not going to be as much of a concern, were more in favor. It was pretty favorable by staff with a 55% liking that option. The other part of this survey was checking in about the school start time. So that was something, you know, that, as everyone knows, that was a change that was made about a year ago. And so wanting to check in and see with, with parents and staff, like, how is that going? Because, you know, we'll, we'll hear things individually from different people, but if we ask a larger group, let's get a bigger picture of how things are going. So this one, the detailed responses are in the back of your packet. And so you can go through and look at the agree and strongly agree and see how it's broken out. But I, this is where I did take some time to filter, like down to elementary, down to secondary, and down to staff only. Generally, with, so the current start times, the current school start time is working well for a student. That was an almost ha, overall, almost a half-agree. And with parent, with elementary parents, it was actually a little bit more favorable. With secondary parents, it was slightly less than the, the total. And staff was the one where it was a little bit more split between agree and, and disagree, and disagree, but still agree was the larger chunk. There were questions about the family's schedule. And again, it was mostly working for people. The before-school and after-school challenges, so that's where we can kind of see that it's obviously mostly an issue with our elementary parents for both before and after-school being challenging. And, but we can see, so it's about like 30% of our elementary parents, for example, before kid's school care is a challenge. For about 29% of our elementary parents, after-school scare, after-school care is a challenge. So as we're looking at, you know, schedules and start times, that's something to be considered. And then, of course, the overall satisfied was the 40, 47% agree and 36% disagree. So just, just basically information for us to have as we move forward and check in with how things are doing. Any questions related to the feedback?
Ms. Hardy?
Mine is just clarification, you excluded the neutral no response and the NA when you did like the strongly, when you gave the percentages for agree and disagree.
Yeah, in the summary. The detailed ones are, of course, in the, in the back.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dorn?
Quick question regarding the start and end dates. I don't necessarily have an issue about it, but we did change, you know, in terms of what's proposed. Any feedback regarding starting on Wednesday versus Thursdays for years? For some years, we started on Wednesday, for a number of years, we started on Thursday. You know, the idea of a shortened week, but any feedback on?
So we don't, we haven't directly...
How short, or that type of thing?
We haven't directly asked, like, do you prefer Wednesday or Thursday? I think probably for most families, it's going to be like, that's no real difference to me either way. I do know having the shorter, like, starting on a Wednesday or a Thursday is preferable, just because it makes it a shorter first week for students who are new and in new grades, and also for staff to be able to prep and have their, their teacher workdays and their building days and everything that same week that school starts. And so that was something I considered when I was looking at how the dates fell in '24-'25. Because from, from my experience of being here, it's like, yeah, that Wednesday, Thursday seems to be the sweet spot for the start, start of school.
And just to be clear, I'm fully supportive of the shorter week. I found that as a principal was a great way to go, and I was just curious how it's played out in practice.
Yeah. And so I did look at the previous 10 years of calendars. There was only one year where we started on a Monday, and I was here for that, and I remember it not being liked.
Okay, Ms. Burnett, and then Ms. Marotti?
Just for clarification, are we asking questions about the calendar too, or is this just the survey stuff?
So I haven't gone into the calendar yet, I can move onto the calendar if that's what we want, if we're ready to.
I'll wait for the calendar.
Ms. Marotti?
I'm not sure if my question goes with the survey or the calendar, so if you listen to my question and if you think you want to push it out, that's totally fine. But I, I thought that we had a requirement of a number of student contact days. So I'm confused on how we would shorten the student week to four days if we have a requirement of a certain amount of days in the...
My understa, I'm not an expert, but my understanding is it would, we would extend the school year.
Oh, okay, got it, thank you.
And I'm going to look over here at our instructional people, because that's not my world.
There's a couple of different ways to address that issue. One is to have longer four-day week, like the school day be longer for those four days, if you're doing a four-day week, or extend the school day. So to meet the requirements, it's a number of hours and a number of days. So there's a few ways that you can meet within the required having a four-day student, student contact.
Mr. Dorn? Ms. Marotti, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, thanks. So what I'm hearing is that the requirement is hours and days? There are hours that are required, like your day has to be a certain amount, a certain long to be counted as a day. It doesn't have to just be that long, it can be longer, and then those hours would count towards your required time.
And just to be clear, you are not, this calendar does not recommend a four-day week. Great, thank you.
Seeing no more questions, go ahead, Ms. Herbie, with the rest of your report.
All right, so also included in your packet was the, were the guidelines for creating a calendar, and so this is where we get at. You know, we have, we have to have 180 student contact days, plus four teacher workdays. We have six professional development days, four parent-teacher conference days, and we have our observed holidays per Alaska statute in our own policy. So that, there's, nothing on here has changed beyond the dates of the holidays, but I wanted just to sort of, basically, there are a lot of details that go into how we set up our calendar. And then we, also, when we can, we'll try and align with like parent-teacher conferences over Halloween, for example, or making sure our spring break is aligning with UAF. So those were priority, you know, some examples of priorities that I considered when, when putting the calendar together. When you look at the '24-'25 draft academic calendar, the one thing that I went back and forth on was the start and end date, because it just, it's a little weird where the dates fall this year. The, so this particular, I ended up going with August 15th, which is a little bit earlier. It's a couple of days earlier than we normally do. In the last 10 years, it's usually been August 17. But of course, August 17 is a Saturday, so that's not going to work. Starting on August 15 and ending on May 16, there is, and of course, you know, in the, in the feedback we got from people, it was like, well, we prefer the third week. But I know from, from experience that starting, for example, on August 19 is not going to be, is not going to work well for people. And we do like to have that shorter first week. So the other alternative was potentially having a school start of August 21st and ending on May 22nd. I felt that was kind of pushing things back. It also meant the longest quarter was our fourth quarter. And that's not, you know, so this was what I was weighing as I was putting together this draft calendar of, I felt like people would probably prefer to start a little early and be able to get out in May a little early versus being pushed later.
Mr. Dorn, you have a clarifying question?
Yes, I'm just wondering, can we put it up on the screen for anyone who's watching? It helps the public to visualize it, if that's possible.
Yep, I can get it, let me bring it up, and then I'll have to share my screen, it might take a minute. Are there any other questions in the meanwhile, while I'm bringing that up?
Ms. Burnett?
Well, you haven't gotten to it yet, but my question would be, there's a couple of dates that are early dismissals on Monday, so I would like to have that discussion again, and in a few minutes, maybe make a motion to change those.
I support that.
Yes, and I did mark the change that was made previously, but I believe it would be an amendment to make that change officially. I'm going to request that Johnny come up here and help me, please. Let's wait till we, should we get there?
Okay, move to extend until 9:30.
Second?
Go right ahead.
Ms. Herbie, I noticed there's an extra PD day, which is great. I'm just curious, the justification is, it's August thirtieth, it appears?
Yes, so that is reflecting how in, so the, the calendar you just revised had a PD day on September first. So we come over to the next year, September first is a Saturday, and we have Labor Day. So basically, it just kind of mirrored having the Friday before Labor Day off, and it's August thirtieth.
Okay, so then that means the extra PD day then is September twenty-seventh.
So there's not an extra PD day. It was just moved, we used to have one in November.
But wasn't that the one that we just moved?
Yes. So I, I based the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar off of the twenty-three, twenty-four revised, assuming that we're still going to have the literacy needs in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Ms. Smith?
I'm so sorry if you already said this, but could you clarify for me the purpose of the early dismissal on January twentieth?
On January twentieth, so that is, this is one that Mr. Bean may need to answer, but that's again related to the literacy, alas, AK reads requirements on teachers and giving them time. But Mr. Bean would have the details on that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Bean.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the question that came up a few moments ago about the extra PD day, what, the yellow, the one with the yellow arrows covered up one? But if you look at the original from, from twenty-three, twenty-four, there's actually a PD day there. So it's not an extra, we just couldn't see it because of the arrow.
Thank you, that makes more sense.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, could you please repeat your question?
Yeah, I just said, I'm sorry if you guys already said this, but I was curious as to why there was an early dismissal on January twentieth for twenty-twenty-five? Oh, we're not on that?
Yeah, it might have to do with the ASK reads. Honestly, I'd have to go back and, and double-check that.
Yeah, so that's, the early out is aligned, so in twenty-three, twenty-four, the revised that you all approved, we had an early out on the twenty-second of January. And so that same Monday will be the twentieth in twenty-twenty-five. And so it's just bringing over the AK reads, early outs.
Thank you.
So we recognize that at the end of different assessment windows that are required with the Alaska Reads Act, at the end of different assessment windows, teachers need time to look at the assessment data and to update the reading action pla-, the reading achievement plans that the state's requiring. And since this is all very new, we need to build in time for teachers to do that, and it needs to be closely associated with the windows of those progress monitoring assessments. So those are why those, those early outs are built in there. It's specifically to give teachers time to look at that data and to create those plans.
Ms. LaPont for that information. Seeing nothing else? We call, the other motion's on the floor, isn't it? Go right ahead.
I would like to move to amend April twenty-ninth to April twenty-sixth, the early-out days. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong calendar. I'm sorry, I was looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four. I would like to move to amend the twenty-eighth to the twenty-fifth.
Second.
I want to second it, but just a procedural question, if I might before I second it. Did you want to do that in the January window also? It's a Monday to a Friday.
Go ahead, Ms. Burnett.
I was considering that one, but with Ms. LaPont's explanation, unless I misunderstand it, would that day, if, if we did the January twentieth, which is a Monday, if we moved that through the chair to Friday, the seventeenth, does that hamper anything with her explanation on why we have that early dismissal?
I'll look to Mr. Bean.
Thank you. If, if I'm thinking about this correctly, in January twenty, twenty-five, the thirteenth is going to be, I'm looking at this.
Oh, yeah.
That's a holiday, and then we move those. The only, the only issue there was, is that we would have a really short week. It would be a three-day week. And I don't know that's a bad thing, but it's something to think about.
Ms. Burnett?
What if we move that date to the twenty-fourth instead? What would that look like for an early dismissal on twenty-fourth? Does that take us out of that window?
It, it does take us out of the window. I don't think it's, I don't think it's insurmountable. We could do it if it's something that the board prefers. That's, we can make that work. What, what it would do is, the window is probably just going to be two weeks. We're projecting in the future, so I'm not positive about this. But the window would be two weeks. It would end on the seventeenth, and then we would just keep that data for a week and then do the work on the twenty-fourth, if that's what you want to do. The only thing that that does is it makes it where the teachers don't do the changes with the work with their students as quickly as they could have, if that makes any sense. Those interventions would start a week later, essentially.
Okay.
Ms. Burnett, then Mr. Dorn?
So I would just like to keep my amendment as is with the April date, moving to move the twenty-eighth to the twenty-fifth, and I'll leave January alone.
Second.
Ms. Richardson, would you, we are on, Mr. Dorn, do you have a clarifying?
I have a question regarding the-
Okay, go ahead.
Amendment. Given the, the purpose to take the informa-, have the mint information in hand from the most recent testing, and I should have thought of this in the previous calendar, but given it, the map, the spring map test and the AK star are given at the same time. We get the MAP score quickly. I understand people have already gotten some information. If we move it to Friday, the last day of the testing window, I'm assuming that MAPS information is not available to teachers yet.
Are you referring to April still, or are we looking at January?
We're only talking about April, that's the amendment.
So, a couple of things. Number one, MAP test and AK star are not two separate tests. They're combining the tests. But to put it to your question, we, as soon as the test is over, as soon as the testing window is over, let me back up, it won't be as, as soon. Probably within a week after the testing window is over, DEED will release that MAP data. So this week, so like this year, it was very quick, like you said, like, I think less than a week. It was, it was, it was very quickly. If we move it to Friday, I, you know, honestly, kind of, if, if what I'm thinking what your question is, what happened this year is the window was open, or I'm sorry, the window closed on Friday, and we got the data on Monday. So if we move that date, that, that data day to the Friday, we might not have the data. And I, I think you're right about that. If, if that's what you're asking, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Sorry, follow-up. So instructionally, and I, I know teachers will take advantage of the last few weeks of school to move as far, a child as far as they can. But practically speaking, if we move it back at least Monday, and I know I was, happened to be in a principal's office when they got the MAP, spring MAP data on Monday, when I came through, so that afternoon, they would ostensibly, if it's as fast as it was this year, which was great, they would have that data to, to look at. But Friday, they would not have the data.
That, that actually is possible now that you say that. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So we are on which amendment? Moving the twenty-eighth to twenty-fifth? Ms. Richardson? Yes?
To, to the amendment. Okay. I, I do have reservations about it because of the purpose of that early out. And I, I do understand a Monday piece, but I think for students, they would, if they've gone through the testing, it, it's an early out, it's not a half-day. And I don't think it's that disruptive to the continuity of instruction throughout the week.
So if you are, want it to be moved, you can vote it up. If you don't, vote it down. Ms. Richardson, would you please call for the vote? Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
No.
Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. Herbie, is that complete your report?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on her report? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Herbie, for your report.
Ms. Sanderson?
Yes.
The action item is to pass the, we're still going to pass the calendar as amended?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Richardson, could we vote on that, to pass it as amended? Then we, I think we will have everything covered on this one issue. Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, thank you, Ms. Richardson. I believe we move to our AASB. The next on our agenda is the, the AASB policy platform change. Board member April Smith will provide a report to the board to make changes to transitioning board policy to AASB policy format. But I'd motion?
Move to approve transitioning board policy to AASB policy format.
Second.
Ms. Smith, would you please provide us with your information, please?
Thank you. At the last policy committee, the proposed change to the host system for our policies was presented. I expressed some concern over our limited funds for this project. But we heard from Ms. Minert, and Ms. McDaniel, as well as CSA Maline, and they expressed support for the system changeover. The AASB system is used by nearly all the other districts in Alaska, and as testified by our staff, is much more user-friendly and efficient. Both Ms. Minert and Ms. McDaniel spoke about the ease of use and the extra tools available. And while there'd be an initial setup fee, the operation of the host would be a similar cost to our current system. Although I did send an email asking for those numbers, so I don't have them to say that for sure. But hopefully, we'll hear about that after my report. And the AASB uses model policies that are put through a legal review, so they would be pre-reviewed. And in the long run, we may see a reduction in our legal fees by changing over to the AASB system. The consensus of the committee was general support for the change as long as the cost was similar to the current system. That cost wasn't available at our meeting time, but like I said, hopefully, we can have that. And the conversation also supported making the change as soon as possible to allow the staff the time to work on the changeover over the summer break. In light of that conversation from the committee, I do fully support the changeover of the system to the AASB online policy host.
Ms., Mrs. Smith, so you don't have the, the quote that from?
I do have the one from AASB. It's just the, the operating cost that we currently paid at Board Docs is the number that was, I did not have to have that conversation at my committee. And that was just my oversight in asking for it before that meeting, and so hopefully, we maybe have it around.
So we do have that number now.
Okay.
So the Board Docs comes to us from a vendor called Diligent, and our, we pay a package fee of twelve thousand dollars per year. We don't have a breakdown exactly of what each, like, Board Docs versus agenda, or the policies versus agenda, but we're working on getting that breakdown. But the overall package is twelve thousand dollars a year.
Ms. Burnett, then Ms. Marotti?
I think Ms. Marotti was first. Would you like to go first?
Oh, no, I just misunderstood Mrs. Smith. But Mrs. Sanderson clarified that we do know the amount that it would cost from AASB, which is, is that the five thousand? Yeah.
I actually have two questions. My first one will be, what does this look like with policy changes? How many policies will need to drastically change to meet AASB criteria?
Well, first of all, I am not a professional and have no elaborate knowledge of AASB. I'm just here to report what our policy committee discussion was. However, is my understanding that our policies don't have to be changed. They will just be inputted into the AASB system as they stand. It's just that going forward, when state statute changes, we will have a model policy on how to make the new state statute a part of our policy. And we will have that without having to consult our own lawyer and go through our own process. We can look at their model policy and say, yeah, that works for us, or let's make a change to make it more fairbanks. And so that would be a large benefit. I think maybe Ms. Maline knows more about that.
Go ahead, Ms. Maline.
I'm not sure I know more about that. I know a little bit more about that. And to your question about changing policies, it is, like, Mrs. Smith said, this is a platform by which we would work within to access our policies. What would change is the numbering on our policies. Right now, we have, you know, policy one-one-one, one-three-one. Those numbers would change once we moved to the new platform. But our policy itself would remain the same. And that's what makes it a little easier for us. If, if we join this platform, a great number of other districts in the state use the same platform. So it'll be a little easier for us to compare our policies to other districts as well. We can do that now, it's just a little more complicated.
And then my second question, I appreciate that, that's excellent. Thank you so much, Mrs. Maline and Mrs. Smith. My second question will actually through the chair be to the admin or Mr. Minor. Just curious, follow-up, I know I talked to you previously. Did you have a chance to check out the interface? Have you guys seen it? Have you even like maybe seen a version of it whatsoever? Is it interactive and easy for people?
Yes, as Mrs. Smith indicated, in all, all of our experience with it, it's much more user-friendly, easier to search for a policy you're looking for. It's just a lot more user-friendly. And I'll, anybody that wants to add, can go ahead and add their experience.
I'll add that, basically, it, we got a demonstration of it in our training, in our board development in January. And it, it's easier and faster to find things. Right now, we struggle. There's also some deep work that I would have been, you know, would like to make sure that we could address and deal with because of where we are in our policy, so.
Thank you.
Anybody from the administration? Okay. Okay. Mr. Dorn, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. And I'll apologize for my oversight on Thursday. I should have caught it when the agenda was posted, that we don't have any, this information is not attached to our agenda. Is on, was publicly- Is on, was publicly noticed and posted with the policy committee meeting last week. So with that, and for the benefit of the listening audience, particularly because it is a financial deal, could the administration give an, a specific overview of what the contract covers and what those costs are? So that the listening audience has a clear understanding of what we're voting on tonight?
Are you talking specifically about the, the platform with AASB?
The contract with AASB. And, and I'll give you, just so you know a context, I am supportive of this. I think it makes sense, particularly if the administration says, yes, this would be better for us, because you'll deal with it on an everyday basis more than we will. So I'm supportive of that, but I just think for the listening audience, we, we should have had this posted with the agenda, so we can do that by
So what do you ask? What is your ask, Mr. Doran?
My ask is that the administration give for the listening audience a rundown on the contract and what involves in the costs.
So I have that in front of me, those numbers? Sure. I'll make sure that that gets sent to you again, and that you can see it. I mean, each board member already received this information, and I'll make sure, yes, you received this. Anyway, I don't want to debate, but I'll, I'll make sure that that happens.
Objection? Sorry. My concern is for the listening audience
I understand.
who has not necessarily seen this, because it wasn't added to our agenda. It wasn't, the documentation was not included on our agenda.
I understand, thank you, Mr. Doran. You have anything else? Ms. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Sanderson. If I may, I could very quickly just give a summary.
I would appreciate that.
I have that available very easily here. So it is a basic contract that says that the district would elect to take part in the online policy service. The project involves having AASB publish the board's online policy manual on the internet in a Folio electronic format. AASB updates the board's online policies promptly after receipt of the word processing files, and they update links to the Alaska State statutes and other legal authorities provided by the board's policies as soon as practical. The archived copies of our board's policies and manuals, we agree with them on how they will store them. And then there are some disclaimers, and since we will add this to the publicly available document, I don't feel that they need to, every word of the contract needs to go through. But there are subscription fees, and they will begin when the district executes the agreement. Each subscriber must pay a one-time policy online development and publication fee for converting the board's policies into the Folio format, which is $1,240. The initial annual subscription fee will be prorated. There's some dates and information that will change there. But that prorated fee in this contract that was given to us was $2,295. And that was based on a certain date that they were prorating from, and I'm sure that that would change based on the date we actually enter into the contract. The 2023 policy update fee is $1,470. So the total initial publication and subscription fees are $5,005. And they would be due within 30 days of the invoice. Like I said, some of that would change based on the day that we do sign the the contract. And then the current annual subscription fee is $3,060. And that includes the policy update service, as well as the policy online subscription fee, and the annuals fees are subject to change. So I think, Mr. Doran, that might be the gist of what you wanted there. And there's more detailed information that we can attach to the agenda, so people can go back and look at it.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Sanderson. I think my question was pretty similar to Mr. Doran. This was the first time I had heard about this. I read the agenda this morning, and I saw it, and there was nothing attached. And so I had to personally ask Mrs. Smith what it was, because I hadn't received any emails about it or anything. And so I assumed the public didn't know anything either. I guess my question is, can you find these policies anywhere online that AASB already has?
Yes.
Yes, just on their website?
Some, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have the, they're not online, they have, you have to log into it to be able to see it for AASB. And I believe that's a service for its members, which we are one of them. Okay, Ms. Marotti? Oh, Ms. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Smith, for reading the contract, but what I think is being asked, in the name of transparency, is that the public be privy to that contract and the fees associated with it, by putting this contract on the, and the fee schedule into Board Docs, ironically, as part of this agenda item. If I'm wrong, please correct me. I also want to thank the board for discussing this. I have been asking for it since 2018, and I'm excited for it to finally come to fruition. I think it'll help us better communicate and be aligned with this as a statewide policy platform.
Ms. Hardy?
All right, and it's not a question. I figured we were at the point we're going to vote. It was just speaking in strong support of this, and also thanking President Sanderson for really taking this head-on, getting the quote, making sure we accomplish this. I know it wasn't an easy lift, and I appreciate your dedication to us doing the work.
Thank you, I appreciate that. There are just things I want to see us accomplish and do, and we need, as we work as a team, we will get it done. Thank you. Is there any comment from the public, Mr. Doran? I don't hear any, thank you. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Now I can say yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Okay, moving on in the agenda. Oh, the next is under Information and Report, Proposed Curriculum and Material Report, K6 English Language Arts, Health, Physical Education, Science, and High Schools Statistics Materials. Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Chang Yee, will provide a report on the curriculum materials provided for K6 English Language Arts, Health, Physical Education, Science, and High Schools Statistic, Certistic, Status Materials. Take it away, Mr. Bean.
Thank you, good evening again, and we're going to give a better hope for the visuals, because this is going to be more needed this time. Excellent. Thank you, good evening again. I want to remind everyone, this is about materials, materials, not curriculum. This is only about materials, not curriculum. We're going to start with the K5 Language Arts Core Materials Grant. I think everyone knows that we received a grant from DDE this year to purchase these materials, and here's how that process went. We started with four options from DDE. We immediately narrowed it down to three, because one of them did not fit our needs whatsoever at all. We sent samples of those three options to all schools. We actually physically took them to the schools, and, and, and every school had them for a week and could give their input on which one they liked better. That survey was, it's not moving. I'm sorry. Because what I have on my screen is not what's up there. Give me one second, please. More issues with the internet. We had three options, and we sent all three, we sent samples of all three to the, all schools. Every school had them for a full week. We got responses back from teachers. And they narrowed it down to Amplify and Into Reading. Those are the two options, and as soon as my internet comes back up, I will put it up on the, on the screen so we can see. I'm not sure what the difference is between me standing there and over there, but that's okay, that's what's happening. Teachers looked at all three, they narrowed it down to Into Reading and Amplify. At that point, those samples were put out for public view. They were, they were sent out for a public view for for, for a full week. They, folks could come up here and just come up here to my office and, and look through them anytime that they wanted to. We put that ad in the paper, we put it on social media, we put it on our website. Ms. Burnett did a PSA for us on the radio to get folks to come out and give their input. From that point, I'm going to try again here. Yeah, that's what I've been trying to do, hold on. All right, we'll try it again. From that point, it went out for a public comment for a week. Public gave their input on it, on, on those two. We took it to the board committee, the board committee, or went with our, with, with our input, and then now I'm going to bring it to you guys. So here's what that would be. The two were Into Reading and Amplify. We are going to recommend Into Reading. There are several reasons for that. We're going to look at a couple of slides that show what that is. Number one, the platform online is much easier to use than the other. It's very friendly, and it's fewer clicks for teachers to get where they need to be. It also means that K-12 will be on the same platform. So currently, we use Into Lit for 612. This will be Into Reading for K5. For the teachers, it's, maybe it's not, that, that big of a deal. For us, behind the scenes, it makes life easier, that we have one platform to deal with, and if something goes wrong, that we, we can fix that one platform. It just makes life easier that way. The books are now combined, where they're, where they're not really old-fashioned textbooks, where it's a hardcover. It's more like a workbook-type thing, but it's almost the size of a regular textbook, where kids do a lot of writing in the book. Teachers like that part also. One of the downsides with Amplify is it had a couple of controversial units that were in it. Our teachers pointed out, teachers across the state pointed out to the Amplify folks, there was so much conversation about it, that Amplify held a meeting with folks in my world to kind of talk it through, and they were told what the issues were with those units, and their response was essentially, then feel free to not teach those units, which in, in our mind, wasn't a great response to that problem. A few other things, Into Reading, that this is important to us, is that the interventions come with the program. It's not just the core, but the interventions come with it also, and that's an expensive thing when it doesn't come with it. Amplify, that was something extra that we would have to purchase. But the main reason, honestly, after we narrowed everything down, we were leaning towards Into Reading after hearing from the teachers and all the things that, that I just told you. We started working with those two publishers on the contract itself. We told them exactly how much we could spend based on that grant. And the amount was $1,500,000, as it says up there, it's exactly up there. Into Reading came in at 1.4 million, so a little bit under, and gave us a five-year subscription and 50 teacher additions, and teacher additions are very expensive, so 50 per grade. Amplify came in at the exact amount with only four-year subscription and only 40 teacher additions, so just financially, it makes a lot of sense. The teachers narrowed it down to the two, and to be honest, some teachers are not going to be happy with it, because we're not choosing the one that, I mean, we were going to, that was kind of lose-lose kind of situation. But we made a decision based on what we thought was right with all the things we just talked about, plus the financial side of it. So that will be our recommendation to this board. Do we want to move on to, and do them all together, or do you want to do them separately?
We won't move on, we have a question from Ms. Hardy.
With the workbooks that you mentioned,
Mm-hmm.
what's going to be the repurchasing cost of those workbooks, since they're consumable?
Thank you for asking that, there is none. Once we pay for them, for, we get them reimbursed, or not reimbursed, but sent to us every five years. We, that will get essentially 1,000 per grade level every year for the next five years.
Go ahead, Mrs. Doran.
So that 1,000 and the 50 teacher additions are enough for us, or do we have to buy additional?
No, sir, that'll, that will cover us. It's, it's 52, it's 50 teacher books per grade level, we'll be fine with that.
Okay. Question, and perhaps when it comes to us before, but as I was listening to some of the symposium presentations, one of them happened to be a breakout about, really about iRead by one of their representatives. They basically said, everything that has gone before in reading is gone, it's bad. But iRead will, is, is the thing. What I'm interested in is she didn't talk about the components of iRead, so as you've looked at this, would you be able to, and I did not get in to look specifically at it, but I was interested in her take on it, would you be able to give kind of the components that are very different in iRead versus other approaches that they said iRead is different from, or?
Yeah, can you please, I'm, I'm not sure, when, when you say iRead, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, or the Into Reading.
Oh, Into Reading. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, so what we're
Unless there are two programs, I don't, not sure.
Well, there's something called iReady, so I wasn't sure who you were listening, because there was an iReady presenter there, so I wasn't sure who you were referring to. Okay, so here, Into Reading, some of it is going to be very, very familiar to our teachers, because what it is, is this is the next version of Journeys. So Journeys is going away, and this is the new updated version that is based on the science of reading. So, so some of the components will look the same, some of them will not, and the new components are based on the, on the science reading, which is what the whole symposium was about. Is that, is that?
That's helpful, because, and I will go back and make sure that, as I thought the person was presenting themselves, I'll make sure I have the right one, but you may have clarified something important for me.
Okay.
So I, and I'm familiar with the Journeys, and knowing this is their new version, since Journeys is going out, that's helpful.
Thank you.
You have a follow-up?
Yes, in terms of the information that's given us and the, and the dollar figures, I'm assuming the grant is enough for us to cover
Yes, sir.
this. So So when we looked at the, the report and the, the purchasing, you know, going beyond the literacy, were you going down further on the list or am I getting ahead of that? Or is?
This is as far as I'm going to go for the language arts. Next slide is the next group of textbooks. So if you want to talk about language arts, this is where this is right now. If you want to talk about other things.
Let me hold.
Okay. Okay.
Any additional questions? Okay, Mr. Beam, would you please continue?
Yes, ma'am. So before we move it, so that's the, that's, that was based on a grant. Everything else now for the rest of this is hard dollars coming from our funding. So I want to make that very clear. I also want to make sure that we know that the budget for these materials for next year, of course, was cut. We know that went from $915,000 to $500,000. That's almost a 50%. So that means we're able to buy fewer things. So what we're going to see here is I'm going to be asking you to approve some textbooks that we won't be able to purchase until next year. So I want to keep, I'm going to make that clear before we go any further. The purchasing schedule, and we'll get into a little bit of detail. The ones on the left, you can see is what we would like to purchase starting July 1. And then the ones on the right that are shaded, that would be for older purchases. That year is not correct, that, that it would be the following year. First thing we're looking at is sixth grade language arts. This is coming because as we said, Journeys is coming to an end anyway. Last year, when we voted to make middle schools and go from K, from K-6 to K-5 and move the sixth graders into middle school, what's in, what's, what's happening this year is that sixth grade language arts teachers are having to use old Journeys items or a hodgepodge of their own stuff, which we don't want them to do. So what we're looking here is we're going to purchase Intolit, which was already adopted by this board previously for middle school. We're just purchasing the sixth grade, middle school version of that. So this board approved it a couple of years ago before I, before I was here, when we did the language arts. And now we're just purchasing the sixth grade materials to make it easier for the teachers. Because what will happen now is if a teacher currently is teaching seventh and eighth grade and sixth grade, they have the Intolit, but they don't have the matching materials for sixth grade. This will make their lives easier.
Mrs. Smith and then Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Sanderson, through the chair. I was just pointing out that a couple of people had raised their hand, but that's all. I can just see everyone easily.
Yes, you can. I get intent on what's right here. I can see off the side view, I really can. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. And thank you, Mr. Beam, for your time and effort on the slideshow. Speaking of the slideshow, can you, is there like, is this linked anywhere else? Because I'm on the agenda and the,
Currently it is not, but I can send it to you later if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you.
Continue.
Thank you. So sixth grade language arts, that's that part. You can see how much it costs right there, $65,000. Please note that because of budget, we can't buy one for every student right now. That is a class set issue and we'll purchase more when we're able to later on to kind of fill up that need.
Ms. Harding, then Mr. Dorn.
So this will be like the previous mentioned one where there's workbooks or no?
I don't think that this one is, but I can't say I'm 100%, but I will find out and let you know.
Mr. Dorn?
That was my question.
All right, thank you. Continue, Mr. Bean.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to PE, Health and Science Materials. This is the timeline, the, what I would like for you to note, please. January 31st to March 17th is what our teachers had an opportunity. Same thing with, that we did with the language arts. We physically, my department physically took books to a school, dropped off. I did it myself a couple of times, six or seven books at a school, I mean, sorry, boxes at a school, came back a week later, picked those up, took them to the next school. So every school had a full week to see all of these materials. That's a significant change what we've done in the past because in the past it was they came here.
Yes.
And we got very little input. So what we tried to do this year is to get more input from teachers. We took it to them and we did get more input on that. So that's something that, that we're really happy about. So that went from January 31st to March 17th. Below that in the red, the following week, public comment. It was the same time as the language art. So anyone who wanted to come up and look at it could. And then as soon as you guys give us the okay for this, then we'll purchase it. And we'll have, and we'll have these books ready to go for August.
Ms. Harding?
Move to extend until 10 o'clock. Second.
Continue.
I will talk faster.
Mr. Dorn, you have a question?
Yes, just a quick question on the input. What you've been trying to do is get more, when you say more, what, some, some idea of how much input did, were we able to get?
I would say we got a tremendous amount more of input, not as much as we would like. They were, they were, it was, they were out at the schools. And if you mean teachers, I, we did get, get lots of input from teachers. When you're thinking about the public, honestly, very little. It was out there. We published it, newspaper, social media, website, PSA. And it's just, folks just don't come in very often for this.
Follow up.
Go ahead.
An idea tends,
From the public?
No, from, from teachers.
Teachers, dozens, maybe 50 to 60.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Burnett?
As the curriculum committee chair, I just wanted to back up Mr. Beam. When we, we put this out everywhere it possibly could, I had it on eight radio stations in PSA form and such. So we, we put all we could into getting the word out there for people to come in.
Okay, so that's the timeline of that. Middle school science, this is the something that, this is our biggest purchase this year currently. Honestly, we don't have anything for middle school science. It's, it's kind of like an online free thing that teachers use. It's not very good. And, and this is something that we had to buy this year for sure. So that's, and when teachers voted, this was tied for first. That one is going to run $208,000, we see that. High school science, the ones that are tanish are the ones that I'm asking you to approve, but we'll purchase in the future. We won't purchase with next year's funds, but the following year. So we can see what that is. By, Bio is keeping their current resource. That's what they wanted to do. And we were happy to do that because of the financial situation there. Biology here, oh, the first one was AP Biology. They're keeping their current resource. Regular biology, that's going to be an open source that was ranked first by the teachers. That's not going to cost anything. We're very fortunate that we don't have to buy anything there. And that's an online open resource that the teachers liked. High school science, many times we're keeping the current resource because that's what was voted on. Physics, we're not going to purchase that until the next year. Again, science electives, the two that are in tan will purchase those next year. The other two are not actually approved to be classes yet. We're going to take that on next year and then we'll bring that back to you. Once they're approved as an actual class, then we'll purchase things, but we're not at that point yet. PE, and this is K-12. So Spark was very popular. That's the one that most folks wanted. We're, we're purchasing that for the secondary schools. We're going to put the elementary schools off for a year and purchase that next year when we have new money. Health, this is another one that we wanted to absolutely make sure that we bought. There are two, one's the middle school version, one is the high school version. They're the same publisher. They were voted first by the teachers. What I want this board to make sure that they know is that in both of these, there's the regular textbook for health and there's a supplemental sex ed book. So those are two separate and distinct things. So when it's time to have that unit, that's when that smaller book will be handed out. But the kids won't have that all year. They'll have the regular health book. So there's the two separate things. We, we like that idea too. So we are recommending that. And the last one here, statistics. This class was adopted last year by this board. It goes into effect next year. This is a new class, so we had to buy textbooks for it. So this is the stats book for the new class. That's all I have for this particular part.
Are there any questions? Mr. Dorn, you have a question?
Yes, I have two quick ones. For things that we're staying with the current resources, is there any concern for copyright date?
Darren, I, I think if we went for another cycle, there would be a concern. I think we're fine for one more curriculum cycle.
And if I might have a question?
Go ahead.
With the, I really appreciate you looking at what to get, given the limited numbers, money, and what to hold for next year. But should we be thinking of any concerns for the carryover? What's projected for next year? And what we would have been, we might be coming forward to with new adoptions for materials? Because we have other subjects.
In a different way, I'm not sure I'm following the,
Okay, so there are other disciplines that will be looked at next.
Oh, I got you.
So there may be materials recommended for those to purchase. We're also carrying over X dollars.
Actually, our, our next ones coming up are, I believe, music and art. And that's going to be a lesser cost for us overall anyway. So I, so I think we're, we'll be okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
I believe we're all done with this and.
Feel free to shoot me down, guys. Learning from watching the assembly, I moved to suspend the rules to take up items three and five before taking up two and four in interest of time and then possibly picking those up next meeting so that we're not here all night. I'm moving to suspend the rules so that the things, because we have to do something before we vote on it. So in order to have this come up on our next meeting to vote on these policies, parental involvement and major gifts and donation, we've heard a lot of testimony. We want to get the votes done. We need to hear them tonight. And then we hold off on CTE and BEST. And then we hear those reports next time.
Is that a motion?
Shoot me down. That was my move to extend the rules, but I think it's debatable and I couldn't find it on our list.
Second.
Ms., Mr. Bean?
CTE will take three minutes.
Yeah. Ms. Smith, Mrs. Smith?
BEST will take one minute.
Thank you. So clarification.
Are we voting or is this just reports?
If it's going to be that, it's no. It's, it's just to suspend the rules to move so that we can vote next meeting. I want to make sure we're out of here by 10 and that we're trying to do us a favor. I can take it back. I made the motion, I take it.
Guys, we're not going to have cross conversation. If you are in favor, we vote it up. If you are not, we vote it down.
I take it back and I can do that because I made the motion. So we're done. Continue.
All right. Mr. Bean, did you have anything else for the board?
No, ma'am, I'm finished with this, but I'm ready to do CTE next.
Oh, sir, please continue.
Yes, ma'am, I will continue. Okay, oh, sorry, last thing, you have these documents as far as what we are recommending. I'm not going to go into that. Okay, CTE, this is a curricular change. This is not a materials change, but it's very minor. The only thing, this, there is a class called cybersecurity. It is a one semester class and there is also a cybersecurity B. What we're asking is that to remove the prereq for this class. Right now, it says that kids have to take Computer Essentials 1A or 1B. We just want to remove that prereq. That is not necessary. We didn't need it in the first place and it was an oversight when we originally put that in there. We just want to remove that prereq, that's all. And then there's a recommendation from Ms. Simpson and I in your packet.
Questions from the board?
I just wanted to make just a statement. As a policy or curriculum committee chair, the curriculum committee highly recommends that the board pass all of this. They did good work. Mr. Beam did amazing work as well. This is all solid and the, the committee really supports this. So that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Marotti.
I'd like to take this opportunity. I emailed President Sanderson about it and haven't heard back. But while we have the committee, curriculum committee chair and administrative representative, we received an email regarding the advising educator pathway for CTE. And I was hope, I'm hoping that the curriculum committee could take that up. That would hopefully produce entice and encourage students to become educators.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. And the next one is the, is there any? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Were there any comments from the admin?
For the curriculum? Are we still on that or are we, have we moved on?
I thought we moved on, but.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Bean. So this next policy is policy 126, parent involvement in education. There's a state statute, 14.03.016, that was adopted into law in 2016 that it requires districts to have a policy or policies promoting involvement of parents in education programs. And, and it is a requirement for, specifically for all districts. It is in state law. Our district has been out of compliance since 2016 because we don't have a policy that is directly related to this statute. So I'm going to give some in, these introductory remarks, but I also want to note that we have John Pataston from Cedar's office on the line to answer questions if we would like to do that. As a district in practice, we have been following the intent of this law, but we do not have a policy that sets clear parameters for, for everyone. And this policy has been fashioned after the, the model policy that we heard ASB does model policies. This one was, was fashioned after that one. So this is, that's kind of the background and the history of this. Ms., Mrs. Smith can give a little bit about the policy committee's feedback on this particular policy. And then, like I said, we have John Pataston on line if we have specific questions about the statute or the policy.
Mrs. Smith, could you give us a follow up report on this?
Sure, thank you. So the policy committee voted to forward this policy to the board with a recommendation to adopt with the caveat that the administration clearly indicates language that is beyond the exact language of the statute. And so what you have in your packet is different than what we worked through in the policy. And so basically what they have done is largely removed all the language that was not the, the statute. And so now it's somewhat irrelevant because they have fixed it up to bring it to the board. So thank you to the administration for hearing the policy committee on that. The discussion, as you can imagine, was lengthy on this policy. It's important to me to let you all know that the FEA rep on the committee firmly opposed the adoption of this policy. The rep was concerned that no educators were involved in the drafting of the policy and that that added to the feeling of disrespect that educators are feeling from the board, the legislator, legislature and the assembly. The rep also did not appreciate that the language in his perception was about exclusion and did not serve to remind parents of their duty to participate in the education of their child. Administration reminded the committee that we are out of compliance with state statute because the statute requires this language be added to our policy. Administration and principals reinforced that the policy is our current practice since it has been state law for seven years. All aspects of the policy are already available to parents and adding this policy simply brings us into compliance with the statute. It was noted that the draft before us at the committee, which like I said, is different than the one you have, had language that was beyond the required statute. Some of that language was adding to ambiguity that's all. that's already present in the statute. We had, most all of the issues that were brought up in committee were simply issues with the state statute, not really with us putting the policy or putting this policy in place. And it's just important to remember that we can't debate the state statute. It just is what it is. And so, once the committee could understand that, then we were able to forward it with the recommendation to adopt. But we did, we were assured by the administration that the AR that will come with this policy will address some of the ambiguity that is in the statute language, which we had a lot of questions about who, and when, and how all of these statements were going to be accomplished. If a student opts out, who's responsible for creating alternative work? How will that work take place? Things like that. And so the administration will answer those who, and when, and how in the AR. And so at this time, the concerns of the FEA rep were also addressed by the administration and the policy committee, that when the AR is written, many stakeholders will be involved. And all of those questions fleshed out and worked into the AR. The language in the statute is what we really just need to get into our policy.
Ms. Marotti?
It's just a question of then the timeline. So this policy is going to come before the board for us to vote on the policy, and then the AR will be written?
Yes, that's generally the process for a policy, and then AR is written to implement the policy.
And then follow-up? Sorry, can I ask one follow-up? Does that AR also come before the board?
Not, no.
Ms. Marotti?
I have a question and an amendment.
Ask your question.
How did, how did this happen? So it makes me really concerned about our policies, and my expectation is that our policies are in compliance with Alaska statute. So how exactly did we not make a policy since 2016? I think that's part of the administration's job, to make sure our policies are in compliance. So how did this happen?
Well, as you're aware, I wasn't here in 2016, or 17, or 18, or 19, or 20, or 21, or 22. So here we are, and so we are trying to write what was, what we haven't had done. It did come to the attention of the district through the Attorney General's office, bringing to our attention that we weren't in compliance. So that's how it was brought to this timeline.
Where it originated from, we don't know. So we just are trying to become into compliance. I don't want to speculate on anything, so. You have a.
Are you done?
Did you have your amendment readiness, Marotti?
I would like to move to amend the title.
Oh.
Oh, we're not. Never mind. Then I just want to provide feedback, because that's what this is for. Can we change the title to Parents/Guardians so that it matches the language of the policy and becomes more inclusive of students that do not have traditional parents?
Do we need to hear from Mr. Our SEDOR rep, who's online, if he would like to just speak to us and clarify, or just give us a short summary or update?
Sure. Mr. Patassan, are you there? There he is.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Great. I'm mostly here today just to answer questions. The policy is pretty straightforward, complies with state law. There's no regulations on point this time. And with respect to the, I don't know, Ms. Marotti, if you were going to ask a question about amending the title. Obviously, no legal issue there, so.
Mr. Dorn.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I've got several questions about this. I am fully in support of the concept. And as we've talked about, is the, we've had this in practice as far back as I can remember in the districts. So that goes back 35 years. In practice, the, the, what I realized today, and I really want to thank the administration for their responsiveness in getting me copies of the various letters that have been exchanged. This came to the Attorney General's attention from a complaint. And from what I understand and can best get at is the, yes, state law says we have to have this. For whatever reason, it wasn't done. We thought we were in compliance. I think by practice, we need to do this. I am concerned, partially, there are questions regarding what some of these things mean. Do we know whether they have been clarified with some of these timelines? What's the?
Mr. Dorn, what's your first question?
One of my questions is regulations. Whether regulations passed by the state board relative to this that also we should have in our information bank to understand this policy?
I'm going to, I'm going to punt that to Mr. Patassan.
Right, yeah. There, this is just a state law that was passed seven years ago. Department of Education Early Development has not put regs together for this particular law.
Your next question.
Okay, my next question is in terms of the latest response from the Attorney General is that in accord with our letter to his office, we have until August 15th to get back with a full what we're doing, how we're doing it. Is that correct, Mr. Patassan?
Yes. The Attorney General's office has afforded me, it's being handled rather informally, but they're amenable to just having me reach out to them by mid-August to tell them the progress of the board.
And relative to that, there is currently a legislation being considered that would amend this policy. If that, well, depending upon how that's, policy might or might not be amended, and if it's in any timely manner, would that impact our consideration of putting a policy together now or waiting? You know, we've got policy review planned for the summer by the board, which you informed the Attorney General about. I'm just thinking that we could wind up having to pass this and then changing it quite quickly. What your legal perspective on that is?
It's certainly a concern. Concern one, though, is that, I mean, the state law currently requires a policy to be put in place, and it would be prudent to pass a policy now. The Attorney General's expectation wasn't that, you know, if a policy gets adopted by state legislation by June 1 or June 2, whenever it would happen. It's not as if you need to get a full new set of policies together by August 15th. And, you know, the legislation, as you can see with this current iteration, doesn't give a timeline for the districts to adopt the policies. And I'm not sure if the versions that are in the legislature now contemplate such a timeline for the districts to come into compliance. So I, my initial thought on that is just not to worry about what may come and to focus on what's in front of you now.
Thank you for that clarification. I have other questions. Just put me back in the queue.
Ms. Marotti, then Ms. Burnett.
Going back to the AR, I'd like to ask that the administration send the board the AR as soon as it's public, if not sooner, so that the board can ensure that the AR carries out the intent of the board policy. This has been practiced in the past, so this is not outside of our roles in policy management. Thanks.
Ms. Burnett?
I would just like to throw my support behind this. While there may be talk of the Attorney General allowing us till August 15th, I think it's super important, considering we're in a funding season, and the Attorney General and the governor himself have asked us to please have a parental policy in place. That way, we will get funding. And if that helps push us in that direction, I think that we really don't have time to waste, considering that we do not have this in place. We need to come into compliance, even if that means we amend it a month later. We need to come into compliance. That's super important, especially during funding.
Mrs. Smith?
I also support this because it's the law. But also, you can see that we had Assemblymember Haney, who came in here and said, "This makes me feel a lot better about the district." And that is one of our goals, is to be in compliance with law and have a good relationship with the borough.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Dorn?
Okay, thank you. And this might be more to the administration. Do we have any guidance from DED as to what they expect on implementation? For instance, my question would be, we have a human biology class. We've, that's noticed. Parents have had input. When a student signs up, is that considered the unit on human reproduction? That that's already covered? It's at least two weeks in advance. The parent knows about that. Or certainly has that opportunity to know about that. Or do they, the teacher have to figure out what specific week or weeks they would do that unit? Do we have any guidance on that? And or what's your take on that?
Like Mr. Patassan said, that the Department of Education Early Development hasn't attached any ARs to this policy. So it would be our work to identify those things, timelines, expectations, communications, and that's what would be written in our ARs, to implement this policy in a way that is understandable by parents and staff. So to answer your question, no. DED has no guidance.
Okay. Do follow-up? Do we have, what's the administration's, our instructional leader's anticipation of that? Would that have, would a teacher have to? If a student enrolls in a class with a reproduction unit in it, do we have to get that sign off? What's the expectation?
At this point, it would all be worked out through the AR process. So we would need to bring in the teachers, the administrators, have those conversations, go through here, identify what kinds of clarity is need to be for them, for clarity. That's all a part of that AR process. And so we would bring them together. We would hear their input, write the ARs, you know, bring it before the board. But all of those are the details that would be fleshed out in the AR process, using this policy as the guide.
I have some more questions.
Ms. Marotti?
Thank you, Ms. Maline, for that explanation. Do you have an ETA? Oh, sorry. Let me back that up. Hypothetically, if the board were to pass this before the end of this academic year, what is it, how long will it take to create that AR and get that back to the board?
That's a really good question, because we would, to go through all the needed readings, it would be, the soonest would be the June 6th board meeting that we would vote on this, because we do a second reading and then, or the first reading and the second reading. So if, in fact, the board did approve this policy or adopt this policy on June 6th, that work probably wouldn't begin until the beginning of the next academic year. So then you're assembling your teams and doing calendar stuff. So it could be on into the first semester of the next school year before ARs are written.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dorn? Can you tell me how many more questions?
I will pare them down, but I have several.
I would appreciate that.
So. So I can. I will email the ones I don't ask tonight.
That'd be great. Thank you.
But there are some things here that I think are important.
Continue.
That in understanding, as we protect parents' rights, so that we know what we need to be, to inform them of, and how often they have to sign a form, and the form has to be sent, that, so a topic, for instance, like talking about mammals in a science class, what, would it be necessary to inform the parents when you start talking about what's a mammal? And one of the distinctions versus fish and birds are, you know, involves reproduction? So it is live birth. So is that, in your opinion, is that something that we need to be cognizant of informing parents about?
I think that what you're talking about are fleshed out in the AR process. When we get together and we start getting down into the weeds of what content is considered, what and how, and those kinds of details are a part of the writing the regulations to implement this policy. So you're talking about some pretty specific things that, that really don't need to be in policy, but need to go through an AR conversation.
Okay, and I guess why I'm asking, and the ones I email are sort of that thinking ahead towards AR. Okay. If I could do one more and then pause for anybody else in the queue.
So you're going to email the rest of your questions to?
Not the rest. This one I need.
I'm sorry.
I will email the ones I don't ask tonight. But I do have another question.
So you have a final question, and then I need to move on to Ms. Matheson, who has not been heard, and Mrs. Smith.
Okay. And if you want to put me in the queue after them, that's fine.
Ask your question, Mr. Dorn.
So my next question is in terms of, and I appreciate the fact that a lot of the wording is exactly what's in statute. We don't have a choice on that. I, and I appreciate that understanding. But there is one that's, I think, important. If there is a reason we didn't put it in, in policy, so that parents understand quickly. But it's, nothing in this section prohibits a school employee or volunteer from answering a question from a child about any topic. Is that something we would, you would consider putting into the policy so it's quick for parents to see?
I think I would need to cross-reference it with the Controversial Topics policy that addresses some of those kinds of things. So this policy will cross-reference some other policies that we have. Again, those are, are like next steps in making this a part of the district's policies.
Move to extend till 10:30?
No.
Second.
Ms. Matheson, and then Mrs. Smith.
I'm going to object next time you do that. I'm just letting you know. Yeah, she said 10:30.
Are we clear on the extension?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Matheson.
I would like to ask through the chair. Ms. Maline, would a syllabus answer the concerns for Mr. Dorn? I have to sign a syllabus for almost every single class that my children attend. If I have questions, I email the teacher. So that would put the concerns of each individual parent in their hands to communicate with the teacher, correct?
Yes, yes. I think a syllabus, in fact, I could foresee a syllabus being a part of an AR, having that be a part of the expectation to implement this policy.
And my children get credit every single time I sign that syllabus? So the teachers know who is participating in their child's education and who isn't. So adding a syllabus as a requirement, can that ease any concerns?
I think it would address this policy. And if in the AR we wrote that there would be a syllabus presented to parents and signature, I could foresee that satisfying any of those concerns.
Thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. I'm just ready to move forward. I don't have anything.
Email your, rest of your questions to them, and they will be addressed in that manner, and then we can move on with the rest of our meeting. Is there?
So our next.
What's that?
She's, she's next. I was just saying.
Yep.
She, is that, Ms. Moline, is that you?
Yes, so the next policy.
Yes, please, Ms. Moline.
Is Policy 939, and these revisions are pretty straightforward, and they, the intent is to expand our BEST homeschool program to be a statewide homeschool program. So that's what these changes are. And Ms. Smith can give an update on the policy committee's work on this.
Ms. Smith, back to you.
Thank you. So the policy committee found this policy to be very straightforward. We had very little discussion on it, because it is just simply changing a few words to reflect once again our practice, because we are already a statewide program. This is not making us a statewide program. It is just putting it into the policy, and so it's cleaning up language. And within, they recommend to adopt this policy change.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead.
I have several. One of the questions I had is that the qualification eligibility is that the student must reside in the state of Alaska. My concern, I don't know if we do that now, but one of my concerns is we have military parents, families who may be transferred, may have an intent to come back or whatever, but they want to stay with our district. And I know families who have gone to our BEST program, or we have other parents who may go for a year. They want to keep the connection with the district. They're traveling or helping family out. Anyway, why the restriction to their residing in Alaska?
I could answer that, but I'm not 100% sure. So I'm gonna let Mr. Minert answer that one.
There's a couple of reasons for that. One, it's state law that students must reside within the state of Alaska to be enrolled within the school district. With that said, the Military Compact does allow us some flexibility in working with military-connected students as they transfer in and out of the district, and that's a regular practice, not only for our BEST homeschool program, but for our other schools. As our students are transferring, we want to make sure that they can continue, continue their education. And then when they're ready to enroll in, you know, their new home attendance area school, wherever they've landed, then they'll enroll in those schools. So not, you know, we're not excluding our military-connected students. There's the Military Compact that guides that process, and we're already doing that today.
So I just feel very validated, because that's what I would have said.
Great. And that's a great clarification. I, thank you, I, that we have that. And if I might follow up on that one. If I understand, then, from what you're saying, Mr. Minert, that a parent who may be traveling for a year, go on sabbatical, non-military family, as long as they're retained, they'd have to retain residence in Alaska. In many cases, they would, certainly, they would still be eligible. Or is that problematic?
That's not problematic. I mean, that's kind of the beauty of homeschooling, that families have a fair amount of flexibility as, you know, their travel, I guess their, their flexibility allows them to travel as long as they're continuing to connect with our homeschool program and providing work samples and meeting other requirements of the program.
Thank you. I have another question. And I just want to say that when I ask the questions, I'm looking for, when it comes to policy, you know, the policy comes before, is either they've been answered, and so I might have fewer questions then. So the planning preparation here. I was interested in the deletion of the first one and two, their program options versus the new ones, because are these, they're still parent-driven option or online classes? I just want to understand why we're taking those pieces out of the reference.
You're talking about item number one in the, in number two, both? Mr. Minert, you want to clarify that?
Yeah, sure. I can clarify that, and Ms. Bean might have more to add. I, I do think it clearly articulates what our process is in terms of students and families needing to go through an ILP process with a certified teacher on staff with BEST. And so that's not just a parent-driven process. Parents are certainly involved in that, but they do need to meet with the educational specialist and set up an ILP as required by state law. The second part of that, we Xed out, we just felt that, you know, obviously, online courses are available through BEST, but we didn't necessarily need to spell that out in policy, as there's many other curricular options also available to students. And typically, those aren't all listed within policy. But then did want to make the additions to clearly articulate that students are available to participate in extracurricular activities at their home attendance area schools, and can also enroll in classes at their home attendance area schools as part of the BEST program, because those are currently allowable under our program.
Thanks for that explanation. I have one more question on this.
Go ahead, Mrs. Dorn.
Okay. The clarification of program versus school, and I think this is a good clarification based on the reference that it's a standalone school, whether it is a program, am I correct on that?
That's correct. It is BEST homeschool. It is a school.
And so my question on that is, as such, BEST would be able to host its own teams, and I use that broadly, because some they may not want to do. But I know different homeschools in the state do have teams. If, if that was, since our program has really grown, that would be a potential for them at some point to do that.
There was, there would be nothing that would prevent them from doing that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
See, and no additional questions. We move on to our last presentation.
Again, this is Policy Number 1156.1, and it's major gifts and donations. And we heard some public testimony around this. And the, the intent of this policy is to remove barriers for, for the schools to receive gifts. So with that, I'll let Mrs. Smith give the policy committee, committee's take on this particular policy.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. The committee recommended that the board adopt this policy. The committee heard from Mr. Minert and the two principal reps on the committee, as well as Mr. DeGraw, and they all adamantly agreed that the current policy hinders our ability to best serve students, because it does not allow generous donations to be freely accepted at the school level or even administration level without board approval. As Mr. Dorn had noted earlier, that you can take the check and leave it sit on your desk and not deposit it, it was just noted repeatedly that it created an awkward and stressful situation if the, it was in the end of the school year. There's not going to be any board meetings. You have to explain to people that you're going to leave their checks sitting there for months before it can get, or at least weeks and weeks. And also, just gave a general overall feeling of awkwardness to our employees. And it was burdensome and not, and then Mr. DeGraw presented that it's actually not best practice to have a low limit, like $1,000. Other districts have much higher limits, such as 50,000 to 100,000. He mentioned the kind of donation that would cause someone to name a gym after you, as what people are considering major donations. And, and he, his team did research that throughout the state, and, and we are the only ones with anything anywhere near this. So other districts have those, and this would bring us in line with best practice. The committee discussed that the board could and should consider a way to still recognize the generous donations, but allow them to be accepted more easily through this policy update. And then I did mention at that time that, at the AASB concert, conference, I think Ms. Sanderson and I maybe were having a conversation with some other people about this. And they were all very shocked that we had this $1,000. And they did mention, to address Mr. Dorn's concern, because we talked about this in the committee also, that they scrolled people who did donate, you know, significant amounts or materials to the school on their school board meetings, put them on their Facebook pages and other things like that, so that they were still recognized in the community without hindering the acceptance. So it was pretty easy for the policy committee to recommend to adopt.
Ms. Burnett, go ahead.
I'd like to support this. I definitely think that we need to raise that cap. I know that we did hear some public testimony earlier, and I do not support removing an amount. As a hockey mom who seeks out sponsors, literally to pay for my hockey season, and also working in radio where we sell air to people who need advertising, getting somebody's name out there, things like that, recognition is huge. So I would support this, but maybe with an increased amount, like 20,000 plus, you know, we board approval for $20,000 plus or something like that. That way, it's not such a low cap, but we're still giving that recognition that is deserved.
Mr. DeGraw, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you, President Sanderson. Just, that was a very good summary by Ms. Smith. Just to add into Ms. Burnett's comment right there, the intent would be to place some dollar amount, a threshold in AR, as well as potentially, if the board wanted to put some, you know, we don't want necessarily donations from certain industries or organizations. We could put specifics of that nature in the AR.
Mr. Dorn?
I think Ms. Marotti was before me.
Ms. Marotti?
Thanks, Mr. Dorn and President Sanderson. I guess back to what Mr. DeGraw said. So based on the testimony that we've heard, I do support increasing the amount requiring the board to take action. But I'm confused on how eliminating the definition of a major donation eliminates the requirement of the board to take action if it literally still says the board must take action. Do other districts, I think Mrs. Smith said that the administration did do research with, in other districts, do other districts have an amount in their policy? Or is it as vague as our, as the policy is being amended, where it just doesn't say anything at all?
Yes. So, Ms. Marotti, I'll have to go back and verify that, whether there's an amount. Yeah, the, the change we're proposing is to eliminate the definition of a major gift here in the policy and then define it in the AR. But I can go back and look at the other policies. The range that we saw was, as Ms. Smith mentioned, 50 to 100,000 dollar range in other districts. And I can confirm whether that number is identified in policy or if it's in their AR.
Follow up just real quick. I appreciate that research and look forward to the, what we receive. Logically, I, I just assume it should be in policy. But if, if it does show that across the state, that that's not the case, then I'm interested in seeing that. Thank you very much.
Ms. Dorn, then Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. My first question is in terms of when a change came about. I'm not in support of what's being recommended, but, and whether a slight dollar situation is good. But what I'm concerned about is the primary objection to the policy as it stands is that, and listening to the policy committee, I really want to thank Mrs. Smith for doing a good job in giving the various perspectives on the various policies we looked at tonight. So thank you for that. But the, the big question seems to be, oh, we can't accept it, and I'm hearing, we can't deposit an amount until it's approved by the board. I'm going by practical experience, actual experience in this district, that that wasn't the issue. We took the check, we put it in, yes, went to the board as to the nearest committee. I don't know when that changed, and I'm curious as to when and why that changed. And the reason I ask that question is that we hire people and start them working before they're approved by the board. I don't know why we changed policy or practice on accepting donations. Do we know when that changed?
I, I don't know when it's, it changed. It's been as, like, since I've been here. But the policy does read, a major gift or donation may only be accepted by formal action of the board. And so that would lead me to believe that we were, for however long we've been doing it, have been in compliance with this policy by not accepting any donation except by action of the board. That's how I read that. So I don't know how long that's been in practice, but that's how I read it, just what I read it to say, is that we're doing what the policy says.
Ms. Hardy?
It says it was adopted March 21st, 2006, if that helps. Can we check with AASB if they have a model policy on this, since we have moved to adopt them? And I saw on their thing, they offer both custom policies if they don't, but it doesn't seem like it. So I think we could use their help.
Ms. Richardson, if you'll make a note of that, please. Thank you. Mr. Dorn?
I would also consider, as that would be considered, the formal action accepted, this as our formal board action approves the hiring of a certified staff member. But that we should be able to go ahead with that, so take that under consideration. For the dollar amount, I would really be looking to stay very close to the 1,000. When we look at what we recognize, and I think Ms. Burnett was saying, you know, we are recognizing people, 1,000 bucks is a lot of money. And we get to recognize a lot of people for that. And the, we don't get very many 20,000, 50,000, 100,000. They're mostly a few thousand. And I think that recognition, and I believe that was part of the big intent of the board in the past, to, to make sure we have an opportunity to recognize people. And so I'm going to be very strong in my support to keep it 1,000, maybe I can go 1,500. But it is, it's a very reasonable amount, and I think the recognition of what we do in our, for our community is very important.
So, so just a comment on that. The different, the distinction between recognizing the donors and expecting the acceptance of the gift to go through the board, through a board, an action of the board are kind of two separate things. I think there's a lot of ways that we can recognize people that give any number of donations without it taking a board action. And that in, in our recognition process, it might even be more of a recognition by going through this recognition process than having it be on a board approval.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you for that, Mrs. Moline, through the chair. That's kind of exactly what I meant. I was just highlighting the importance of recognition. I, $1,000, with all due respect, yes, that is a lot of money, but it's, sponsors hand that out all the time. I...
All right, moving on. All right, moving on. There's seeing no further comments. I think we're at, uh, board. Comments and reports. Colonel Surry, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, I just, uh, want to thank the superintendent, uh, for mentioning Fort Wayne Wright and, uh, what we experienced this last week. This is the tightest community, military community I've seen in 25 years and the CG said the same. Major General Eifler, uh, and published that officially. The outpouring of, of support that we got, um, from the district and from everywhere else in the borough was truly astonishing. Thank you very much for that and, uh, and it will pull through our resilient community. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. So the policy committee did meet on the 24th and we did discuss one other policy, which was regarding the school nutrition program. And I just encourage anyone, um, and, uh, to go and listen to that meeting or at least look at the smart snack regulations, um, because they're interesting. And I think that, um, I thought that was going to be kind of simple and it's actually a pretty, um, lively conversation regarding that. And, um, we also heard an update from Ms. Moline regarding some AR changes to 132.2. And, um, we had a few questions and conversation around that. And so anybody who's interested, um, there is a good discussion on the smart snack. And we, we will, at this time, we're not planning to have a formal policy committee meeting again until the school year starts in August. Um, but the current members are on notice and willing and ready to address anything that, um, the board is ready to give to them. And also the policy committee will, is looking for new members, um, who, to start in July for community members and to parents. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to congratulate every single retiree. I mean, you did it. Congratulations. And I also wanted to remind everyone that, um, graduations start next week. And we don't have any tickets to hand out this year, so go out and support the graduates. I'll be there.
Ms. Hardy?
I'll keep it brief. There is a borough assembly meeting on Thursday. They are, uh, discussing the budget. You can sign up by calling the Borough Clerk's Office, uh, by 4:30 PM on Thursday and they will call you if you would like to testify and advocate for, uh, fully funding the $59 million ask from our proposed budget. I'm presenting, so I will be there. And there is also going to be positive picketing, uh, by FEA and ESSA out front if you want to join that as well.
Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. A few points, um, just in terms of that borough testimony for that public hearing on Thursday. Recognizing that the Finance Committee of the Borough has recommended a $50 million local contribution, which is five and a half million dollars less than our current funding. And it's status quo funding. And so it is of import to let the borough know what you think. And encourage people to be there and to be present next week or when they do get to, talk about actually approving the, the budget. As Ms. Moline mentioned earlier, but I, uh, want to add my own personal, um, thanks, appreciation to our principals. Uh, yesterday was indeed the National Principals Day. Really, really appreciate what they do. And as I was talking to a principal recently, one of the great things I experienced and they have, they had mentioned to me is the collegial, uh, support and working relationships. And, uh, it was a newer principal, I won't say younger, newer principal who, uh, was just saying how much, uh, they have appreciated, uh, their colleagues. And then today is actually National Teachers Day. And so really want to thank all our teachers, uh, for the work that they do on an everyday basis for their students, their colleagues, their families. And really, really appreciate that, um, as next week is, uh, National Teacher Appreciation Week. And I know many of our PTAs are highly involved with that. But one of the things I've greatly appreciated with that, we've taken as a district and our PTAs, uh, recognition that teacher is a broad term. And they really have involved our support staff, um, and others in our schools that, that make, um, a difference for our kids. And so those three recognitions I think are really, really important. The, um, certainly congratulations to our retirees. And then maybe just to request at some point if we can get a review to the board about our policy review process. I highly recognize that the pandemic times changed, uh, some of the things to get together in meetings and all. But, um, mindful of, um, times when we would make sure policies went out to, uh, the various associations, FEA, ESSA, FPA, the Principals Association and stuff. Those are the people who carry out the policies on a, uh, daily basis and for most of them. And that we, uh, you know, kind of just do a review of how we're involving people, the process it goes through. So that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Moline, you have any closing comments?
Just one, uh, to follow up on a, uh, earlier, um, comment made concerning certifications for Alaska REEDS Act. May 16th, Teaching and Learning is hosting a, um, Zoom meeting concerning, uh, Alaska REEDS Act certification requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Moline. Ms. Smith?
I apologize in advance. This is kind of long. It's four pages worth of 11-point font and I, I wrote it thinking we were going to go this long, but whatever. Um, feel free to stop me at any point if you have any question. Um, I kind of just realized that this is my last full meeting as the student representative, so it's kind of saddening, but I'll save those comments for the next meeting. The state competition for solo ensemble is next weekend in Anchorage. If you know any students attending that, wish, be sure, wish, wish them lucked as they've put a lot of time, effort, practice and money into the competition. On the note of music, I have the spring concert list for high schools. West Valley is May 3rd for orchestra at 7:00 PM, May 4th for band at 7:00 PM. May 5th for choir at 7:00 PM and they're all having that at the Performing Arts Center. For Lathrop, May 2nd at 7:00 PM is their choir concert, May 4th, 7:00 PM is their orchestra concert. May 9th is their show choir and jazz band at 7:00 PM. And May 10th is their band concert at 7:00 PM and that's all at Herring Auditorium. And for North Pole, um, the band concert was April 27th. And May 6th is their choir concert at 7:00 PM and that's at the North Pole High School Auditorium. Finals week is coming up and I'd like to wish all students, uh, good luck on, as their stress for their tests comes in. As I was watching the retirement ceremony tonight, all I could think about was how many of my younger siblings won't be able to experience the educator, the amazing educators I've had over the years. I saw my middle school principal retire, my financial algebra teacher retire who wears perfectly matching outfits every day. I saw my favorite librarian of all time retire. I saw the coolest counselor I've ever met with an, Voice of an Angel retire. The, an amazing North Pole musical technical director retire, one of my favorite custodians retire. And although it's sad to see them go, I'm excited to see who comes next and what's in store for the staff and the just, for the staff in this district. Um, I forgot my grad announcements, but, um, all the board members and administration, if you want to, you're all invited to the North Pole High School graduation, May 5th at 7:00 PM at the Carlson Center. I know at the very least, um, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Dorn will be there. Something that I know at least North Pole High School does, and I'm not sure about every other high school. But, um, at North Pole High School, uh, after finals, the seniors all get into their caps and gowns. And then they load up on buses and they tour around the elementary schools in their area. Unfortunately, I won't be able to do that this year because I'll be gone. But, um, I really think it's such a special moment and I think it's such an important and impactful moment for these younger students to see where they're going in the future and the future of their education. Um, and again, please stop me at any point if you have any questions because now this is going to get a little bit longer. This past weekend I had an amazing opportunity to drive down to Skagway for the Spring Osog Conference. Uh, for those of you who don't know what that is, the conference is, it's a conference that, that the Alaska Association of Student Government puts on twice a year, once in the fall on the road system and once in the spring off the road system. During these three-day conferences, delegates from members of school attend a general business meeting where issues related, issue-related school resolutions are introduced and debated and voted on by the delegation. Skagway High School did a wonderful job hosting around 200 students from all across the state of Alaska. It's incredible to see how many students and leaders working together for a common goal to let people know how the students feel on educational, political and other pertinent issues in the state. During this conference, 16 resolutions were brought, brought to the floor, five of which were regarding our district, I believe. Uh, most of the resolutions were passed by the delegation, other than I think two, which I'll get into. The first resolution brought forward was from a student from North Pole High School regarding the heating system at North Pole High School. And wanting it to be replaced due to an inconsistency in temperature, the students and staff alike have noticed that that resolution passed. The second resolution was brought by two students from Sitka High School for an anonymous phone online for students in need. There was much debate on that and it was brought forward, the Stop It Program was mentioned a lot in it. And that resolution passed after a lot of debate. The third resolution was a petition to move Monroe's boys basketball team from 4A back to 3A and was submitted by three Monroe students. There was a lot of debate over this resolution and many questions from the delegation. After all that, the resolution did not pass. The fourth resolution was submitted by two students from Sitka High School. This resolution was titled Osog Against House Bill 105. This resolution was by far the most debated resolution at the conference. After lots of back and forth debate, the resolution passed almost unanimously and received the award of best resolution from Osog. Resolution number five was entitled allowing for a counted vote for the Osog representative, for, for the Osog representative of Osog Executive Board and was submitted by the Anchorage School District Student Advisory Board. That resolution was passed by the delegation. Um, so for that resolution specifically, if you didn't know, Osog has a student representative on the Osog Board. So the ASAA Board and they're, they were asking for that student representative to have a deciding vote and that resolution was passed. I think unanimously. Uh, the sixth resolution was brought by Tri Valley students and was regarding addressing crew structure at Tri Valley High School. And in that past, um, if you want to know what their crew schedule is, I think I can explain it. Resolution number seven was submitted by Hutchinson High School and was titled Hutchinson Student Body in Support of the Fairbanks Education Association, FEA. And there were a lot of questions in it, about it, but in the end, the resolution passed. Um, it basically said that they wanted Osog to be on the side of FEA and the teacher contract negotiation. Um, and that passed. Resolution number eight was KHS Kodiak High School Attendance Policy. Um, and that was basically them, they have like, uh, attendance requirements for you to be able to like pass that school year. And they were just trying to ask for a way to, um, make up those days if you were gone. Um, I think it was over, you write an essay or something about like why you were gone and then you get that attendance day back. Um, that one passed. Resolution number nine was brought by another North Pole High School student. The resolution was regarding bringing back funding to the music programs in the Fairbanks, Northstar Borough School District. And that resolution passed, I believe unanimously. The 10th resolution was submitted by Ben Isleson High School students. The resolution was asking for, to administer high school boys volleyball within the Fairbanks, Northstar Borough School District. This resolution had nothing but support and passed unanimously. Resolution number 11 was unsubmitted by the author, so there's really no point in talking about it. Resolution number 12 was submitted by Polaris High School, asking for support from Osog to create their own general assembly that would operate much like Osog. And that resolution passed unanimously. Uh, the 13th resolution was brought forward by Delta High School, asking for their school to offer, um, a study hall, a study class period for not just seniors but juniors as well. That resolution passed. Resolution 14, it was an interesting one. It was submitted by a student from Region 5. I don't remember what school though. It was titled Osog Should Support the Willow Project. The author said, specified that they knew that the Willow Project had already been passed federally. They just wanted to encourage debate on the topic and hear what students had to say about it. We were not able to spend too long debating it due to time restrictions. But the resolution did pa- did not pass by a long shot. But it was very cool to see all of the students stand up and, and talk about what they're so passionate about. Resolution 15 was asking for support in allowing hats at Yugo River. This pet resolution passed unanimously as it's a commonly successful resolution brought to the, these conferences. Resolution 16, I think was a joke. There was no way to be clear about it because the author didn't directly say it. But it was titled, uh, it was something along the lines of student-led police force at Polaris High School. And they said they needed it because they only had secu- one security personnel. And I say this is a joke because the author walked up with two boys in sunglasses next to him and appointed himself as the chief of police in this situation. I don't know. I just thought I would bring it up because it was funny. The last resolution that was submitted by the Executive Board of Osog. It was asking for Osog to show support in Senate Bill 52, increasing the BSA from $5,930 to $7,308. And I believe there is an amendment to change it from 5,930 to 5,960 because of the recent change. There was some debate on the subject at hand, but it was almost entire, almost entirely, it just questions about the bill. And in the end, it passed unanimously by the delegation. And with that, I'd like to end my comments about Osog saying how proud I am of everyone that shows up to represent student voices and be a part of.
The heating, the bringing back music and the volleyball resolutions to the board?
Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
That's our entire report.
Can I reply to that? Um, yeah, so we don't get the past resolutions back for a little bit until they're reworded with the amendments and signed. But as soon as I get those, I would love to send them.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
I don't know how anyone follows Ms. Smith, um, but thank you for that report. Um, I have a lot to be thankful for, so this is not going to be as long as that one, but it might be a little lengthy. First, I want to thank Mr. Paxton. He's a North Pole Middle School Career Exploration CTE Educator for allowing me the privilege to spend time in his classroom. Mr. Paxton teaches vital life skills like budgeting, taxes, resume writing, uh, interview skills and a lot more. Um, it is always a highlight of my year. I do it twice a year to get to spend time in his class discussing the future plans and dreams of his amazing students. I would also like to thank everyone that has advocated for adequate local and state funding for our district. I thank you, Mr. DeGraw, for correcting the misinformation that was spreading throughout the legislators in June. I watched it and I was cheering you on. Um, thank you to everyone that has provided public testimony in support of an increase to the BSA as well as advocating for the safety of all students in Alaska. Also thank you to Ms. Burnett, who met with legislators recently as well. Uh, thank you to Ms. Hardy and everyone that testified in support of adequate local funding at the Borough Assembly last week. Please note that, like Ms. Um, Ms. Hardy said earlier, we have two more opportunities to testify to the Borough Assembly. That's this Thursday, May 4th in two days, um, and then next Thursday, May 11th. Please continue to speak out, to speak up for our students and staff. We literally cannot do this without your advocacy. I want to thank everyone that came out to provide testimony to our Region 6 Osog leadership last week in support of Osog's core values of integrity, respect, perseverance, leadership, teamwork and inclusivity. Discrimination is illegal and should never be tolerated and I'm grateful that that message was carried statewide. As a reminder and to let the board know, I have asked for the following meetings about the current substitute situation and an overview of the process to become a substitute. I've also asked for a meeting about the Ed Rising Educator CTE Pathway. Um, I haven't heard back on either of those. Recently I've asked for a meeting about board priorities for negotiations and a meeting about the unpaid and required Alaska REEDS Act endorsement. I asked for that tonight. A course and practice test. Um, I've also asked for a board discussion about three separate situations regarding integrity and have not heard back. Um, all of this is not a, a gacha moment. It's just more of a reminder of incredibly important board-related issues that have been brought to our attention from staff, parents and community members. I want to congratulate all the retirees. We miss you already and wish you the best in this next chapter of your life. And lastly, if I can say this, my condolences to the Fort Wayne Wright families. Our hearts are with you. Colonel Surry, please let us know how we can help your community, our community, um, during this time. Thanks.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you, President Sanderson. First, don't forget kindergarten backpack giveaways going on if you get your kindergarteners registered for school. Ms. Smith, it has been a darn pleasure to sit on this board with you the short time I have. I absolutely adore you, and I'm going to miss the crap out of you. I wish you so much luck in your future endeavors, whatever you decide to do. You are going to rock so hard. Just know that. We are so proud of you. Also, I would like to thank Mrs. Moline for her quoting of Eleanor Roosevelt. She is one of my most favorite historical figures, and I love her so much. And that just really touched me, so that was really awesome of you. Also, I will be making my last trips to schools and elementary schools. Had some family stuff come up, so I got a little behind. Thank you to Ms. Bedford, who will be welcoming me next week. And I look forward to seeing the rest of our elementary schools as quickly as I can here before the school year wraps up. Thank you, Mr. DeGraw, for being a champion for our schools. Absolutely amazing, the work you did in Juneau. I have lots of plans in store for more advocacy work, especially locally. Some plans to bring Mr. DeGraw and his championship on air and just hopefully advocate as good as we can. I am also welcoming Mrs. Moline in on that conversation, as long as it works out with her schedule. I think that we could make some good headway in progress with some conversations that way. Also, it is Bike to Work Month, or Bike to, it's Bike Month. And then May 16th is Bike to Work Day, school. Just ride your bike. The weather is beautiful outside, so please get out, enjoy it. If you don't live far and you can take your bike out, Bike to Work. It's absolutely amazing. And then this Saturday, Best Fest is happening over at the Nordele Center. I recently have been asked a bunch of questions about our homeschool program. This is the excellent opportunity for anybody in the public who has questions about our best program to go check it out. There'll be food trucks and a curriculum fair, all kinds of things happening. It's 2:00 to 6:00 PM this Saturday over at the Nordele Center. So please, go talk to our staff that's there. Go tour the building, go see everything that they have in store. Our program has come strides, and I absolutely support it. And so please, go check it out and get all the information you need about it. And then last but not least, most people know it is school board running season. We are there. We do have some seats available. If you want to run, please reach out to us, board members. It's absolutely important that you do. Talk to us, ask questions if you want to know. Best way to do it is to talk to board members. So good luck to those who decide to run, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. So for my closing comments, I don't have many, just have really one. I just, well, two. I'm traveling to, for my granddaughter's graduation. I'm looking excited about that. And I want to thank the board for the help that's been offered to me with a project. Kind of got overwhelmed this year. Kind of really emotional about it this year of this project that I've been doing now for about four years. And I will always hesitate to bring it, you know, out to the public. That is something that I do to enjoy, to keep contact with students, to let them know that we are proud of their accomplishments. We have students who are homeless, but they are going to graduate with honors this year. We have students who have not had the support that they have needed, but they will graduate with honors this year. We have had students who have overcome adversity, emotional struggles, but they will graduate with honors this year. And I take this project on to honor them. And so I really appreciate those on the board that I've asked for support and help, or they've made suggestions to me, because I try to take this on. But then I realized this year, this was the first time. I could not do this in my own strength. I couldn't do it alone. And so for that, I am very grateful. It's just, you know, my way of staying connected to, to the kiddos. I really miss that work. And the job that I'm trying to do here is just an extension of that. I don't maybe always communicate how it needs to be communicated, but you know, the work is a passion, is important to me. And I believe that we are making strides to make it better for our community and for our students and staff. That's important to me. And I wish all of our retirees well. You know, when you see all of that historical knowledge and experience, because people mentioned Randy Luke, Luke Middle School, alternative school. And I remember when that was first being put together. So when you have those memories and that knowledge walking out the door. You know, I think we should start digitally recording stuff because, you know, people pass away, people move away. And then all of that knowledge, all of those experiences are, I mean, we have them on paper, but to hear their voice and to know of the experience that they have contributed to our district. We have weathered some real storms. I don't see us getting over that part. But I really appreciate the administration team in every aspect of your work, because that helps this board performance work. And hopefully, we are working as a board to solidify our dynamic and our approach to how we do business. And I think as we can work as a team in that aspect, to honor each other, respect each other, and to know that we are doing work that is of a high call and a high priority. And we are the ones on the front lines doing that work. So I thank you for that tonight. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Thank you. And oh, that meeting on the 30th, we, it's holidays, so.